Judge, would you please stand?
God, you've said in your word, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. So, God, we ask for your blessing here today in this place, on every person and in all the proceedings here. God, you also said in your word that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. So, we ask for your wisdom here today, God, in this place, for every person and every proceeding. You also said, God, that you are Emmanuel, God with us. You reconcile us to yourself that we may be near to you and you may be near to us. So, God, we ask for your presence here today also upon every person in this place and all proceedings, in Jesus' name. Everybody who agrees, say amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you, and welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, November 2, 2022, regular meeting. We are in order. Item number one is discussion regarding the 2022 Pinal County primary and general election handling, follow-up by staff. Ms. Ross, you are up.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisor, Staff, Virginia Ross, Elections Director. Update for this week, the poll worker training has been completed. We have received from the Recorder's Office 60,121 early ballots, tabulated 51,406, with a return rate of about 35% at this point. I know the recorder has more ballots to deliver us, so we're about, probably one day behind on tabulating, which is a good improvement from before. All of the supply cages for the polls are packed and ready to be deployed, so that's also ahead of schedule. And I just want to remind everybody on completing your ballot, we're running about a 1% duplication rate. That's due to people correcting their votes on their ballots, so we've duped about 800 ballots, and 1,030 voters have only returned the first card of their ballot. So, that's probably a little more than 1% as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Good morning. How many votes do we expect in this election? Has there been a estimate in total?
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I do not know. We have a little pool going over in the office to try to predict that, so anywhere from 57 to or more percent, I guess, is what some of us are guessing. We don't really know.
Okay. I'll buy into that, and I'll say it's going to be the highest turnout we've had. So, we have another agenda item we're going to get to next, and it's about increasing the number of polling ballots that are counted via hand. Right now, there's a 2%, we've talked about that in the meeting. And have you done a analysis of what the statistical correct number is to validate the machines? We need to dismantle, or I shouldn't say that. We need to make sure.
I think that's the next agenda item.
Well, I'm going to, but are you going to be here for the next agenda item?
She will be.
As Supervisor Chair, yes.
Okay. So, on this agenda item, did you mention that we already have all the polling places fully staffed? Is that still the?
Chairman Supervisor, yes. We do have, the poll workers are fully staffed.
Okay. And, well, that's it. That's my biggest concern.
Okay. I didn't mean to cut you off, but it's going to be the next item. Are there any other questions from the board? Supervisor Goodman?
That guy right here.
Oh, thank you. Oh, that helps, yes.
It's not so much as a question as that, you know, you've had several training sessions there in, or my offices, and it's been well-turned-out. In fact, I think it was standing room-only in some of those trainings. And so, what's really awesome to see is the amount of people that are coming and participating and volunteering to be a part of this process. And I would assume and think that it's county-wide where we're seeing this, but right there in the Sandton Valley area, it was, I think that room holds a couple hundred people. And so, I kind of listened in a little bit, and it was great training that was given. So, I just want to commend you on your efforts and the things that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay. Let me, excuse me, just a second. I didn't want Supervisor Goodman to have to deal with my phones in case they went off. If everyone could please silence their cellphones, I would appreciate it. Item number two, discussion approval disapproval to expand the hand count of the regular ballots pursuant to ARS 16-602B for the 2022 general election from two precincts to an unknown number of precincts, and request county's political party chairs to submit the number of names for the hand count board members to the election director by 5:00 PM, November 3, 2022. Okay, that would be tomorrow. I am going to allow public comment on this item, but I would caution, you know, and this goes for call to the public as well. You know, call to the public is a privilege, it's not a right, and we, as a board, are not required to provide time for the call. When it's allowed, it's supposed to be to allow the commentary, or for commentary, on or about issues related to the agenda. This year, as presiding as Chair, I've watched some, and in some cases, much of the civility disappear, to the point of quasi-physical engagement. So, moving forward, when someone speaks, common courtesy, and I assume it's common, and civility will be expected. One does not have to agree with another's opinion on a matter, but please, let's agree to disagree in a polite manner. This is not a football game, this is a place of business, so there should be no applause, cheering, booing, name-calling, or taunting. And the deputies have been instructed to remove anyone who does not follow a certain amount of civil decorum. Is that understood? All right, moving on.
And Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I would recommend we, I'm not sure how you're proceeding, but I would recommend we talk about the item and then have the call to the public, because that may clear up any, I think it's far less dramatic than it seems, and it would maybe shorten the call to the public, and people would be more informed.
I have quite a few folks that want to talk, and yes, and I'm going to make sure that it's limited to three minutes. I'm not going to go.
Will we hear the item as a board first?
Let's hear the item first, and let's, Supervisor Kavanaugh, go ahead and present your item, because you're the presenter.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, there has been concern and commentary from both sides of the aisle, the most notable, of course, President Trump, and the next most notable, Hillary Clinton, saying elections are stolen and the machines aren't counting well, and so on. There have been reports from around the country that there have been errors in machines, in these Dominion machines. We don't use Dominion machines, we use the ESNS. They're tested, they seem to be very reliable. I think, I looked back, and there were zero errors between the hand count and the machine count. We're not going to, I'm not getting into the issue of whether there's code in the machines that changed the vote. That's not today's issue. Today's issue is, we have a competitive process. Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Independents compete in a process, and someone gets elected. But as the concerns have been brought to me, the question is, is the machine, is the machine reliable? Are the counts of the ballots that come out of the machine reliable? The state sets up a procedure, we've talked about it, Virginia Ross has explained it last meeting, we had a contract consultant talk about it. And the procedures by the state law and Elections Procedure Manual say that 1% or 2%, depending on the race, I'm not an elections expert, but generally, 1% or 2% of the ballots are counted as a hand-count sample after they run through the machine. The question is, is that sample big enough to verify that the machine is counting ballots accurately? Never mind any nefarious code in the background, is the machine feeding the paper ballots properly? Are the electronic sensors in the machine reading the dots that are in the machine? And that's really important, because every one of us who votes want our vote to be counted and want it to be counted accurately. So, unfortunately, we have a system where the supervisor requests an agenda item at a meeting, rather than submitting it like I did mid-September. So, we've had some delay, and here we are, a week before the election, discussing this issue. So, the question is, should we count more precincts than the 2% or 2% that are required by law? And what is the statistically valid number? I did a quick check online, you can check it yourself, 95% probability, 1% error rate, that would be about 9,000 ballots. And I think this, under our current system, we'd be checking around three. So, if you would like to have it statistically valid, so that mathematically we can say, yes, that machine is working properly, mathematically it comes out, the sample would be about three times the size. We're counting two, we should be counting around six, is my calculation. But Cochise County did something, and they said, we're going to count 100% of all ballots, early ballots, and regularly submitted ballots. And that may run afoul of state law, so I'm not proposing that. What my proposal will be today, Mr. Chairman, is that the number of hand-counted ballots will be equal to 1/4 the number of persons, they called the board, the Hand Count Board, I think it's, you can nod if that's the right term, Mr. Ross, the Hand Count Board. Okay, so, the number of ballots counted will be equal to 1/4 the number of persons, the Hand Count Board supplied by Republicans, Democrats, and Libertarians, because it's really ultimately up to this board, up to the, excuse me, up to the party chairpersons to supply persons who would count the ballots. And so, that's where Democrats, Republicans, and Libertarians can work together and say, you know what, this could be correct, to dispel, I'm going to, the right wing who says that they, that these machines aren't right, and to have a reasonable solution that we can all be confident in, maybe you'll all get together and say, yeah, let's supply three times the number of counters that we had previously, that way it's a statistically valid count of the machine. There's going to be some people, I'm wrapping it up, there's going to, there are people here, I know, who will say the machines are invalid. That's not today's argument. That's not on the table today. The call to the public, people are going to say that. But increasing the number of precincts counted will add confidence for your fellow citizens, and it's up to the parties to do this. So, the way I've structured the motion is that whatever the number of counters there are, the board members divided by four, it's up to the, it's up to the parties to decide how many votes we want to count. And that's, that will be the motion, and so.
All right. So, let's, do you have the video?
Mr. Chair.
Comments? Go ahead, Supervisor.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. I have a legal question I'd like to ask of the counsel, legal counsel.
I have a motion for executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we're in executive session. Assess executive session, because we're coming.
Getting out of my bounds.
There we go. Back in your lane. Okay. Back to item two. Ms. Kennedy, can you cue up the video, please? I just wanted to let everybody know how a hand count works. This was explained to us when we did an after-action report on the primary election, and I think it's a very good explanation of how a hand count works, just the process. I mean, I've had hundreds of emails, Supervisor Miller's had hundreds of emails, we've all had them, about no machines, hand count only. Would that be possible to do?
In a word, no, nor do I believe it's allowed under the statutes within the state of Arizona, it is just too cumbersome. The other thing that I believe that Director Ross has pointed out to this board is that we have a brand-new law pertaining to the threshold for automatic recounts. The less you touch ballots prior to an automatic recount, the better the election is.
And the hand count is a sample. Could you explain for the public how that occurs and why?
I am not, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I'm not going to be able to mention that particular statute off the top of my head, but after a federal and state election, in other words, those are the ones that are subject to a hand count audit, the entity, in this case particularly, Pima County, is required to do no less than 2% of the precinct cast ballots, and I believe 2% also of the early ballots cast. So, you're hand count auditing both ballots cast at the polls, as well as ballots cast through the early process as well. The determination on which precincts and which contests are actually going to be subject to a hand count audit is done by a random drawing by the political party chairs of the political parties within Pinal County. So, after a federal/state election, the political party chairs would come presumably to the Pinal County Elections Department, because the Elections Director is the chief election officer for Pinal County. They would have, different counties do it different ways, but in essence, they would basically have a big fishbowl with a button or a folded piece of paper with every precinct on that particular piece of paper. They would, believe it or not, actually first draw to see who draws first. That is, within the statute, so there is a hat, if you will, that has Democrat or Republican in it, and that is the, whatever is pulled out, that's the first party that gets to choose the first precinct out of this very, much larger fishbowl. So, they pull out the precincts. Once the precincts have been determined, they then need to determine which contests they're going to particularly do. Again, without getting into too much detail, there's statewide measures, there's federal offices that also are drawn randomly, and then that is the hand count audit process. Then eventually, individuals, again, representing political parties, will come and gather, for example, the precinct's ballots cast on Election Day at Precinct X. That ballot box will come forward with the seal still attached, presumably from the poll workers, I should say, from the election tabulation site, because it came in from the polls to the county's election HQ. The seals were made sure that they were still intact, it goes to the voting tabulation device, they count those ballots, they have a particular number that they're supposed to balance to, generated by the poll workers, so the poll workers say, 202 people came to vote today, that's how many ballots we're giving you, 202 is what goes to the machine, they make sure they balance, and then they put those ballots back into a box, seal it up. When it's time for the hand count audit to occur, that, if that's, if that precinct is one of the ones that was chosen by random, that box comes out. Again, the auditors are representatives of the various political parties. There is what I will call a monitor, presumably somebody from county offices, that will have the actual number that they're supposed to balance to. So, they'll open up that ballot box, and inside there will be something perhaps from the tabulation center that says, from the polls, we got 202 ballots, at the tabulation location, we counted 202 ballots. And so, the monitor will actually take that piece of paper and take it away from the auditors. The very first thing the auditors do is they open that box and count the numbers of ballots inside. No contest yet, they just count the number of ballots inside. The way that they do it best is you count them in stacks of 10. If you and I from this board were together, you'd have a stack of ballots that you would count out 10, you'd hand it to the next person, they'd verify that there actually was 10 in that stack, and you begin to set them back and forth in this particular manner. After you, as your hand count audit board, have determined what number you have come up with, you'll say, okay, we counted 200 ballots in that ballot. And the monitor will tell you, since they know it's 202, that you're off. They won't tell you how much you're off, whether you're over or under, but until you match that number there, there's no sense going on, because the votes will not tally if you haven't got the correct number of ballots from the very beginning. That's just the process to begin the process. Then you have to count the number of, let us say, the US Senate race is one of them that was picked. It's not just Mr. Kelly, Mr. Masters, and forgive me, I think the gentleman running is a Libertarian, I think his last name is Garcia, but I can't remember, but you've got to do the same thing for those, including overs and undervotes as well, because you, once you count up all of the votes for Kelly, all the votes for Masters, all the votes for the Libertarian candidate, and all of the write-ins, and all of the people who chose not to with that office at all, it needs to equal that 202. If you don't, you don't go forward. And that is a time-consuming process. So, as you're beginning to consider doing a hand count office, pardon me, a hand count audit of the entire election, just imagine that process for every office going forward.
All right, so that's how it works. So, next, Mr. Keller, did you want to come up next and explain what's going on?
That's fine. And you may have some questions with Virginia, because I know she has some additional information regarding the numbers and the likes, how they proceed with their hand counts.
We'll go in and out of order here. Well, not out of order, but you know.
Okay. I'm sure I got my notes here. What this agenda item does, it is specific, the way it's structured currently, to the regular ballots, and increasing from two precincts, because currently we have 97, excuse me, 109 polling precincts, 109 precincts, and 97 polling locations, because some of them are combined. So, essentially, you're looking at increasing it based on that 97 polling locations. So, 2% of that is essentially, you know, two polling places, two precincts, two locations that you're going to audit. You're looking to increase that by X number, but it's only for the regular ballots. I want to make that clear. This item does not address any early ballots that have already been counted, if you will, or turned in. It doesn't include any early ballots that are turned in at the poll that day. It is only counting those regular ballots that you come to the poll for, and that you sign in, and they give you your ballot, and you then, you know, return your ballot. It's those ballots that this 2% applies to. For early ballots, it's only 1%. And that is, that's actually the lawsuit that is going on in Cochise County right now, is that they are attempting to audit 100% of the early ballots. And that is what they're being challenged on, that there's only that 1% by the statute that allows them to do that. As Brad Nelson was explaining, what we have also is, again, it's not a true 100% hand count of every race. You're going to select, let's take the ballot measures, statewide ballot measures, for example. There are currently 10 statewide ballot measures. You're going to pick one of those to go ahead and audit. And that is done by every board then, for every precinct. You stay consistent with every precinct, so you don't pick, you know, ballot measure one for this precinct, ballot measure two for that precinct. No, it's the same for each precinct, that you're going to go ahead and audit. So, again, it's only one of those 10. The same thing for statewide elected offices, you know, the governor, the treasurer, you know, Attorney General, and so forth. We have essentially, was it eight or nine? But at the end, you're going to pick one of those, and you're going to, and you're going to audit that. And the same thing for the legislative races, statewide legislative races, the districts that you have, and I think we have five in our county that are running, so depending on which precinct that you might have. And likewise, for the federal.
Can I interrupt your decision?
I think there's a question.
Supervisor Miller.
Yeah, just real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to the ballot measures. Do the, like, a countywide ballot measure or a city ballot measure, do they get polled at all? It's only statewide.
Only state. The statute says statewide ballot measures.
Only?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, just want clarity on that.
Any other questions very quickly? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
I think that, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, when we talk about, we've talked about this just in a couple of meetings, and initially, Mr. Volker thought there was no way, there's completely, we can't do any expansion. And then we've examined it further, and we've discovered that it is not unlawful to expand the hand count of same-day ballots.
Regular ballots, let's call them.
And so, in our current procedures, if the 2% we find is off, we still continue to count, that's expanded.
Right.
And so, by adding two precincts, or adding four precincts, would the, and it may be, this may be for Ms. Ross, it doesn't appear that it would be cumbersome, nor would it delay the election results.
That would have to be a Ms. Ross question, but to address your first point, when you do the first hand count, if it doesn't match, you do a second hand count of the same ballots, the same thing. And if that doesn't match, the next time you go ahead and you double it. So, instead of doing two precincts, you now do four. And if after four precincts, and you go into that process, it doesn't match, you double that again, and you keep going up until you do get an accurate count. And then there's statutes that say, what happens if you don't get an accurate count? And then you go to court. There's essentially, at the end of the day, and the judge is going to make a decision on that.
And we talk, I'll ask you about the Attorney General's letter that says, I have to put my glasses on. The Attorney's General letter that says under 16-602B, the county has discretion to perform an expanded hand count of all ballots cast in person at 100% of the precincts or voting centers located in the county, along with 100% of early ballots cast in Cochise County, according to 16-602B. Do you disagree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, I do. And here's why. And it's a gray area, I'll admit. This is an informal opinion. It's not a formal opinion from the Attorney General's office, and it comes right out in the introductory and explains that. Due to timing, that usually goes through several levels of review and so forth, and they wanted to get this out quickly. So, it says it's an informal opinion. That means it's less persuasive. And there's some factors in there that we believe that they've overlooked. Specifically, one important factor is that the county, the county board is a creature of statute. You only get those specific authorities that are granted to you by the legislature. What the Elections Procedure Manual may give you, if it doesn't comply with the statute, then it's not good law. And there is some case law out there that says that, and it's recent, like, two years ago, that that was one of the issues that, what controls. So, there are some parts of this that, it's just not a settled issue yet. And in fact, in the Cochise County case, they do reference, you know, some concerns that they have with the Attorney General's opinion, and frankly, there's a hearing Friday morning at 9:00 on that Cochise case, and probably that'll be brought up. I know it will be brought up, you know, I'd bring it up if that was the case. I can't tell you which way they're going to fall on that, though.
And then, in that same letter, it references, and for the benefit of the public, this letter came out, I think, Friday night. So, this is why, on page two, this is why, following the 2020 general election, the Office of Attorney General wrote to the Chairman of Maricopa Board of Supervisors, suggesting that Maricopa County should consider expanding the hand count audit to 5% of the voting center locations, which it may do in accordance with ARS 16-602B1 and Chapter 11, Section 3A of the Elections Procedure Manual. So, what are your thoughts on that?
I tried to pull that up. They have a little link in there, and I couldn't pull anything up on it to find out what exactly that letter said. But if I recall correctly, that also dealt with, you know, the cyber ninjas and the audits and everything else that were going on, and there were some lawsuits also, and there were some legislative actions that the state legislator took, legislation took, to go ahead and say, do it in this. to go ahead and say, do it in this situation. I don't know specifically if that's what it's referring to.
And can you, did, did your office talk to Cory with the state elections? Cory Lorik?
Lorik, yep. Yes, Kent did. You know, the county attorney did, did speak with her informally and asked, you know, what kind of concerns they might have if these hand count amounts were increased. And I believe, and I wasn't on the call, so second-hand information from Kent, was that if you confine it to the regular ballots, because the statute specific as it applies to early ballots, there's another carve-out later in the statute that deals with, with early ballots. And in fact, the Attorney General's opinion even says, you know, arguably, that's ambiguous, that statute's ambiguous. So they admit it's like, mm, it's kind of a tough call there. But her position was that as long as you confine it to the regular ballots and you don't increase it to 100% because that tends to read out the, the meaning of the word random anyway, to the whole statute, that you could probably go 4% or 6%, but the higher up that you went, the more risk that you would have of either them coming in and, you know, challenging your authority to do that or another outside entity such as what's happening in Cochise County to challenge you. So within reason, I guess, is the answer I could give you.
So they understood that we're trying to reasonably verify the machines. We're not, we're not going out of bounds.
Correct. And one thing that I ought to make clear so that the public and the board is aware, even if, even if this board passes something today to increase it to whatever number, it will be incumbent upon the party chairs to supply you names to do that. By 5, and this is in the statute, by 5:00 PM tomorrow. If they don't supply those names, you don't go forward. You don't have, you, you don't have the discretion to say, well, we gave us enough, we can do this. You have to have, you know, the, the right amount. And no more than 75% can be from one political party. And maybe Virginia can talk a little bit about how their process works out, where they have, you know, a Republican and a Democrat going through the ballots. And then they have a, I think Brad called it a, an adjudicator, I think it's called an inspector that they use that, that oversees what they're doing. And then they have two and they switch back and forth. So she could probably give you a better number as to the numbers. A letter has previously gone out earlier, maybe two, three weeks ago, asking already for the early ballot names, the early ballot board names from each party. And they have till, actually, it was till last night, I think, the 5:00 for them to supply those names initially. And if they didn't, then, you know, there's another step that Virginia takes, Ms. Ross takes from that by this morning to, to reach back out and say, hey, I still need two names. But that only applies for the original early ballots. So, I mean, not early ballots, the original ballot hand count board.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Do you have any more comment?
I, I stand ready for questions. Oh, yeah. Clear as mud, I know.
I have a question for Virginia.
Okay. So we'll let you have a seat for a minute. And Ms. Ross, can you please come back up? I think there's some questions for you. And I believe Supervisor Kavanaugh is first.
So, thank you, Ms. Ross. Chris Keller mentioned that the names have been supplied for the early board. Is that accurate?
Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, the early board is already working. They're the board that removes the ballot from the affidavit. The names for the 2% hand count board have been supplied by the parties.
Okay. And have the names for the hand count board been supplied for the regular ballots yet?
Chairman, Supervisor, that, that is what I just said.
It's the same, it's the same people.
The same.
Okay, all right. And so have you a provision, a plan for the eventuality, should, should the 2% count, hand count and the machine count not match? That's, that's by statute, you've already got that procedure in place, is that correct?
Chairman, Supervisor, as the parties have already explained, then the hand count gets expanded until it does match or is within the acceptable margin of error set by the Secretary of State.
Yeah, so, but, but you're running the election, so you've got the, you're telling us the people are in place for that, that's good. Is that correct?
Chairman, Supervisor, correct.
And then the, have you done or is there a calculation for a statistically valid sample of the population of ballots and votes which would result in a high confidence level and a low margin of error when comparing the machine count against a count sample? Is that calculation anything that you've ever done, or even in your requirements?
Chairman, Supervisor, no.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Ross? You're good? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ross. Okay, so now, if there's no other questions, I'm going to allow public comment on this. And so I have, I believe, 16 different comments here, so, or folks that would like to speak. First would be Theodora Shiro. Are you in the main room or in the overflow room? Oh, right there. Good morning, Ms. Shiro. If you'd please state, for the record, everybody that speaks, please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors and fellow Pinal County citizens. My name is Theodora Skiro. I live just outside of Kearney. And I'm glad that you clarified that this wasn't going to be 100% count because that's really what I was most concerned about. So I will abbreviate my comments and just say that anyone who really wants to change the law about how ballots are counted should just start a petition, gather your signatures and put it on the next ballot so we can be prepared for the next election and, or else lobby your legislators and give them legitimate reasons why they should pass new legislation to support increasing the number of ballots that should be counted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I would say, to your record, you're correct, that if this is a legislative issue, this is not our issue. If you want to change the law, that's how you do it. Thank you. Daniel Wood.
On the board, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
May we respond to everyone? May I respond to the next?
Actually, that was my bad. I'm not really responding as much as, I'm just stating the fact that it is a legislative issue to change the law. We can't do that on our own. Daniel Wood, oh, there you are.
Yes, sir. Daniel Wood. 200 years, over 200 years, we have had a hand count in this nation of the people, for the people and by the people. All of a sudden, we use machines and it's no longer legal? That's horse crap, okay? We have been addressing an issue for, for two years now about the machines not being accredited. Y'all have been provided the evidence, Chairman McClure. We asked for a written response. We have not gotten one from your lawyers at all. This should be addressed. This is a major issue. This means that any ballot that goes through those machines is unlawful. And here, you're trying to make it unlawful for the people to have a count by the people, for the people, that we've been doing for 200 years? A hand count is by the people, it is not an audit. I know what you're doing. You're trying to limit the people's right of suffrage. And this ain't right. This is not right. If you continue, you're going to only aid in freaking Katie Hobbs's conspiracy, her freaking conspiring because she's allowing these machines to be used unlawfully in the state of Arizona, 16442 Bravo. That's law set in stone. They have to be accredited by a laboratory, period. And those laboratories are not accredited. So if you're going to sit here and say people are violating the law by a person's hand count, my right to suffrage hand count, then what are we going to do to address the fact that these laboratories are not accredited and these machines are not lawfully, not lawfully certified? What are you going to do about that? This is no longer a vote by the people, it's a vote by corporations. And therefore, it is, it's a, it's a freaking disenfranchise of the people's vote. It is that simple. There's nothing to this. I cannot believe that I got lawyers who are elected, sitting here trying to tell us, the people, that a hand count is unlawful. France does, got 50 million people and they can do a hand count in eight hours. Why can't we do that in a county of less than, what, 500,000? We should be able to do that. I cannot believe this. I'm telling you what, I, I fought for this country, for freedoms. And let me tell you what it's like to go and fight and battle and have a child die in your hands where a country doesn't have freedom. And that's where we're leading to here in this country right now because politicians can't make the right choice and protect the right to vote and protect the right to representation and protect the right to equal protection. A hand count on top of the machines will provide equal protection to everybody in the state of Pinal, in, in, in Pinal and the state of Arizona. It is that simple. If you do not do that, you violate the rights of the people under the 14th Amendment, the Arizona State Constitution's Section 2, Article 21 and Article 7. 7, highest number of legal votes. You can't have a legal vote in an illegal machine. 21, you cannot allow civil or military power, i.e. SL&amp;I, ES&amp;S, or pro V&amp;V to interfere with the right of suffrage. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next would be Lisa Sainer.
Chairman McClure, board.
Pull the microphone down to you.
Would it be possible for me to reserve the right to speak at the end?
You may, yes.
Thank you.
I'm just calling them as I see them, so I'll, I'll let you come back. Alex Gulata, I believe.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Alex Gulata. I'm with a group called All Voting is Local Action. We're in Tempe. And we have about 40,000 people statewide that rely on us for information on voting rights and voting rights information. You know, we're here today to talk about voting in a context, right? And what my concern is that we're actually ignoring the context. You know what the context is, right? Because you, you, the quote Chairperson McClure that you had in the video was like, you're getting all of these emails about people who want to do away with machines, people who want to do 100% hand counts, people who want to really restructure the way we vote because they've been led to believe that we can't actually get an accurate result. Okay? In my opinion, that is in fact not factually valid. And so what we have today is a board action, which I believe is well-intended and, and maybe being approached in good faith and reasonably, but it actually attempts to appease people who don't believe in facts. Okay? It tries to appease people who are never going to be pleased. Because the issue here is not, do the machines count the votes correctly? It's controlling the counting room, okay? Chair, Representative, Representative Fillmore had a bill in the legislature, HB 2596, and he said, quote, about that bill, "We should have voting, in my opinion, in person, on paper, one day, electronic means only, hand counting that day. We need to get back to 1958-style voting." Okay? And 1958-style voting was actually not that great. Okay? 1958-style voting is when people were discriminated against. 1958-style voting is when people couldn't actually express their opinion. And in fact, mainly white men, excuse, not, no, no harm intended, but mainly white men decided who could vote and in fact, whose votes would count. Okay? And what we're doing here today, even if we go to 4% or 6%, it's appeasement. Okay? You will never appease this monster because it doesn't want to get an accurate result. It wants to control who decides the results. And by in fact, voting for this today, you're appeasing that monster. The people who are against this, they filed actions in the state Supreme Court to do away with all machines, to do, to do away with all early ballots. That's where people, that's where a subset of people want to go. And in fact, you're siding with those people today. And you shouldn't do it. We recommend that you vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, let's see, next is Jennifer, I want to say Hillsbos? I'm sorry if I butchered that, I can't.
Good morning, Chairman McClure. It's Hillsbos. It's okay, everybody gets it wrong. You're not the first. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Jennifer Hillsbos and I am the Democratic Chair for the Legislative District 15 Democrats, which accounts for 19 of the 97 precincts here in Pinal County. We strongly recommend that you vote against this. This is the board attempting to usurp the legislative powers of the state of Arizona. The statute is clear as mud, I agree. And I do agree with the previous gentleman's comments in that this is possibly well-intentioned. But again, you are hearing from what percentage of Arizonans? What percentage of Pinal County? Hundreds of emails. There's 253,000 or so registered voters. So even if you had 1,000, that would be 2%. Even if each of you received 2,000, you're talking no more than 10% of the county that is expressing upset at how this is being conducted. And to attempt to appease or mollify 10% of the voters over something that I don't believe personally and has no factual backup is political showmanship at the cost of the county. Is this going to land us in jail? No. But is it going to cost taxpayers? There's the potential. If we end up seeing suits, filed lawsuits, things like that, of that nature, that is going to cost the taxpayers of this county in order to mollify that 10% of voters. And on a personal note, I'm a little distressed at the clip that you showed because it went on longer than it needed to and it equated one candidate in an active race with the wrong party. And if we consider that 31% of all votes sent are still cast, that means 66% of the people in this room may still be voting for that person and they may now associate him with the wrong party. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next would be Margaret Hill.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, good morning.
Please state your name and generally where you live.
Yes. My name is Margaret Hill. We live just over the Pinal County border, on the corner of Combs Road and Ganzel. And I'm really proud to be in Pinal County and I really appreciate the time the Supervisors spend. I'm speaking today in behalf of the League of Women Voters and our President of the State, League of Women Voters, Penny Sharon. The League urges the Pinal County Board of Supervisors to vote against Item 2 and stop the misguided and illegal proposal to expand the hand count of the ballots in Pinal County in the November election. The Secretary of State and the Legislative Council have repeatedly stated that Arizona law forbids expanding the hand count. This proposal will not survive a court challenge. And the county will have spent taxpayer money to break the law and further undermine the public's confidence in the election process. Even if the plan somehow survives, a lawsuit finding and training enough workers to meet the deadlines for finalizing results under the Arizona law would be impossible. A group of untrained people thrown together to count tens of thousands of ballots is a recipe for inaccuracy, fraud, delay, which is the exact opposite of what the county would like to do. And all the residents of Arizona want an accurate count. The board must not allow politically motivated efforts based on false narratives of stolen elections to interfere with our longstanding legal and effective ballot tabulation process. Instead, the board must commit itself to proven process that works and ensures free and safe elections and votes against this proposal. The vote count by machine is both more accurate and more cost-effective than person's hand counting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Natalie Fieros-Bach.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Natalie Fieros-Bach and I am a Pinal County resident and co-executive director of Rural Arizona Action. of Rural Arizona Action, a rural-led organization that works to empower voters and protect voting rights. We urge you to vote no against this item. Please do not follow in the reckless footsteps of Cochise County by pursuing a hand count. We are in unprecedented times, and in approving this costly and unnecessary hand count will only serve to fuel the flames of discredited election conspiracy theories. There has been absolutely no evidence that our current standard and system of auditing is inaccurate. This request for change sows doubt on our longstanding accurate and effective electronic counting methods. With dozens of contests on the ballot, it will be impossible to complete a hand count in a timely and accurate way. And to proceed under an assumption that it is possible this close to an election demonstrates a lack of judgment. This is to appease a fringe movement of election deniers, no matter how well-intentioned. A hand count will foment unnecessary doubt and grief regarding the results and leave our vote at risk of human error. This move will only cause further harm and division amongst our rural communities. Please do not proceed at the taxpayers' expense. Costly lawsuits are inevitable, and I urge you to reject this grandstanding hand count and instead work to restore faith in our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Stephen Growth.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for listening to us. My name is Steve Growth. I live in Oracle, Arizona, and I wish to oppose the increase in the hand count. I've been here for twelve years through six elections, and to best of my knowledge, we've never had a problem or a controversy on the quality of the vote and the accuracy of the vote. So to increase the hand count would delay the counting process for who-knows-how-long. The longer the delay is, the more it puts in question for people in the county. The more hands that touch the ballot, as we've been told earlier, the more problems there are, the more questions there are in the accuracy of the vote. So with that, I oppose the issue and encourage you to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Brian Steiner.
Hi, my name is Brian Steiner. I live twenty-five miles west of Casa Grande. I'm off-grid, so I'm addressing the fact that the labs were not accredited, which makes using the voting machines unlawful. According to what is required by the VSTL 2.0 manual, which is what the voting machines were certified under, the program director shall make information pertaining to each accredited laboratory available to the public on the EAC website. The information shall include, but is not limited to, NIST recommendation letter, letter of agreement, which equals a signed and dated offer to do business, certification of conditions and practices, the commissioner's decision on accreditation, and the certificate of accreditation, which equals a signed, dated, fully executed contract. This did not happen. And the Secretary of State alone cannot certify voting machines without the labs first being fully accredited. The most recent SLI and ProV&amp;V certificate dated 2-1-2021, and it's signed by the wrong person, so that alone makes that an invalid contract, uses 52 U.S. Code 20971(c)(2) to assert that EAC may extend a certification because they say so. The code reference is for the express purpose of requiring a vote to revoke an accreditation if NIST advises them to. It is not stated that this may be used as an excuse to violate law and continue to redate accreditation certificates as many times as they would like to, to avoid reviewing applications. In fact, by utilizing this code at all, EAC is admitting they do not have the documentation in hand to correctly recertify this contract lab. This code says incorporation, I'm going to lose my time here, so what I'm going to say is nowhere in this code does it give the EAC the right or purview to pretend it has a valid signed offer from a VSTL, nor does it give the EAC the right to extend contract terms. This acts like, like a right to cancel by a buyer in a real estate contract. So you have to ask yourself, which law are you willing to violate? Are you going to violate ARS 16442B, which is higher? Or are you going to follow the lower law, which is ARS 16-602B? A one-hundred-percent hand count is really your only lawful option. And anything less would violate the people's civil rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Robert Ballmer? B-O-L-M-E-R? Are you in the other room?
Chairman, there is a forty-second delay over in the Ironwood Room, so we're going to check in the Ironwood Room.
Okay. Knock on the door.
Maybe you call them. Just taking light up. You're ready to go.
Just phone them.
Call them out of the bullpen.
Give a phone call?
Yeah. Let's call them out of the bullpen.
Couple more seconds, then we'll move on and come back if he happens to appear.
He's walking around now.
Oh, he is?
Yes.
I'm just, what I'm suggesting is, call all the names that are right there, ready to go. We only have that until they're left, right?
Just to increase this, I will say Kathy Nowak, you're next. Dan Dooley, you're after that. Deborah Broom and Belinda Rodriguez, if you could all show up at the back door and be ready. Thank you. Followed by Ms. Sainer, who will be at the end. It's Mr.? He's not. We're missing Mr. Ballmer. Okay. I think everybody's checked.
He's got three of them in the back there.
Okay, then we're going to move on, and if Mr. Ballmer shows up, we will come to. I hear footsteps. Oh.
Yeah, she was here.
Leftovers from Halloween. I'm still hearing footsteps.
I'm Kathy Nowak, District Two. Much of what I, excuse me, I have to say, has already been said much better. My, my view is I've been involved with the recount probably six times since I moved here. I consider it very, very well-done, very meticulous. We have always been able to verify the machine's count, not knowing what the machine count was, but two parties together independently come to a number. We then talk to the county, what is your number for the machine? Excuse me. What is your number? We've always matched. I don't know why there'd be a magic to saying, well, four percent, we got to do four, we got to do six. Why? It seems to me that we are very solid. I think that is absolutely ridiculous, and I say that we should not increase the number of percentage. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Dooley, you're next.
My name is Dan Dooley, Magma Ranch. Good morning, Chairman and Board members. A lot of things that, on Number Two here, that's already been said, I'm going to just say that I'm against it, really for obvious reasons. It's kind of close to the election to try to change something like this right now. There's probably a lot of considerations that need to be in discussions and considerations that need to be done well before we change something like this, maybe even at the statewide level as well as local. But I'm against it, and I'm not even sure what the benefit would be at this time, since the history has been, I think, pretty, our two percent has been pretty accurate. So really, let's find out. If, if something has to be done in the future and it's considered, I would say, you know, we need some professional statisticians that maybe could help us with that. What's a good number of precincts to do or not change it at all? I just, I think I've probably summed that up. So I'm against it at this time, and I think it's up for discussion in the future. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dooley. Deborah Broom, you're on deck. Well, is Ms. Broom gone? Is Ms. Broom gone? Ms. Broom, is she not here? I will place her to the side for a moment if she's not here. If she shows up, we'll go ahead and have her come up. Ms. Rodriguez, you're up.
My name is Belinda Rodriguez, and I'm from Gold Canyon. Just so that you're not looking for me to show up, I'm actually just here to tell you that I've chosen just to withdraw my speaking time. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So one more time for Deborah Broom. Not seeing her appear. Mr. Ballmer? All right, I'll have to assume these folks have left the building. I don't want to cut them out, but there's no one coming from the back, deputies. There's no one in the next room coming, and nobody in the side hall here. All right, we'll move on then, and we will go to Ms. Sainer.
Good morning, Chairman McClure and Supervisors. My name is Lisa Sainer, and I am the Penal County Democratic Party Chair, and I wholeheartedly agree with my counterpart in her statement. First, let me state the Penal County Democrats will fulfill all its legal statutory requirements, but the motion that has been brought before this Board, I personally feel is ill-conceived, ill-advised, and ill-timed. And if passed, will not make our elections more safe. If anything, it will actually create more harm. Ill-conceived because anyone that's ever been to one of our hand counts, to one of the central counts that has taken place, been a courier for the Recorder's Office, clearly knows that this is injecting a partisan ideology into a nonpartisan issue, and it should remain nonpartisan. This could irritable damage the accuracy, instill chaos and confusion, and can threaten the timely certification of not just our county elections, but the state's elections. Ill-advised because the county attorney has repeatedly warned this Board of its legality, the potential loss of millions of dollars in shared revenue funding, and when we need it the most, and the personal liability that all of you could face, and I really, I don't want to see that on anyone. Cochise County is already facing litigation, and as of yesterday, they've had to seek outside counsel. It's ill-timed because we have six days, six days till the election. What is the plan? Who has a plan? Who's going to execute the plan? Supporting documents that were brought forth with this motion doesn't lay out a plan, doesn't lay out a budget, doesn't address any of the issues that would profoundly affect the Elections Department. Where are we going to hold this massive amount of hand count? We don't even have the room at the current facilities in order to do it. How is this going to address the chain of custody issues that could potentially arise with a sudden change in procedures? Who's going to be compensating these people? They are paid thirty dollars a day. We have a safe and secure election process, extremely knowledgeable officials in both our Elections Department and our Recorder's Office, who are facing challenges that not only occurred that, what occurred during our primary, but they're still receiving continued threats to their safety almost daily. Was any of this considered before this motion appeared miraculously onto the agenda? I urge all of you to vote no on this measure and join the ninety-plus statements I just hand-delivered to the city clerk. Thank you. I appreciate your time and your thoughts on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Sainer. Are there any others that wish to address the Board on this item?
Good morning, Board. I'm Noel Reck from Casa Grande. The rational arguments against expanded hand counting have been put forth repeatedly by experts in the field, and I won't redundantly repeat them. Let's be honest, the expanded hand count is being called for by a small minority of the population, many of which still can't face the fact that their candidates lost in 2020 in a validated, free, and fair election. This has nothing to do with election integrity, the accuracy of the machines, or voter concerns. This is all about stirring the pot and sowing distrust in our system, often with wild-eyed conspiracy theories because their candidates lost. I urge the Board to not validate or placate election deniers and vote against this costly and unnecessary expanded hand count. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that wish to address the Board on this item? Okay, hearing, seeing none. Are there any questions or any comments from the Board? Supervisor Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Virginia, could I, let's just get something straight here because I think in one of the speakers that came up, there was something that she stated that was kind of disturbing to me, and I just want to make sure that people are pretty clear on this. And the comment was about being untrained. There was an accusation about if we were to expand the counting, that these people would be untrained. And help me understand, the two percent that we're currently doing, if that doesn't match, we go to four percent, and if that doesn't match, then we go to eight percent? Is, is, well, in that process there, the way it's all, statutorily, the way it's structured right now, is everybody trained and ready to move forward in the event of something like that happens?
Chairman Supervisor Goodman, we would go over the process before we started it and train the people who show up on what they're supposed to do for the hand count process.
Okay. And I think that, I think more than anything else, just the fact that they brought that up and mentioned that, because there still would have to be a training process, even the way the things, the, the way it sits right now, and we've got to go into that over the two percent that we automatically do. The training will be there. It will be taken care of, correct?
Chairman Supervisor Goodman, yes, and, and some of the names submitted for the two percent hand count have experience. They are returning hand count Board members who have previously done a hand count just for the two percent.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ross. That answers my question as far as making sure there's some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, Virginia, this might be for you.
We just can't let you go.
It was stated that an individual had, has participated in this and has come out with a hundred percent accuracy in her experiences. Have we ever had a scenario where we had to go from the two to four, do you know?
Chairman Supervisor Miller, I went back through-
Chairman Supervisor Miller, I went back through all the hand count audit narratives for the past 10 years and I have not seen a discrepancy in any of those hand counts that were, had taken place.
Okay, that's what I would, because I'd never heard of us having a discrepancy. I think I would have heard of that. I've been here nine years, so anyway, well, thank you for that answer.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Ross, the, is it the logic and accuracy test that we do prior to sending out the ballots? I mean, we're, the logic and accuracy test is the one that's done with the Secretary of State coming down. Could you explain that for a sec?
Yes, Chairman Supervisor Kavanaugh, the Secretary of State gets ballots, premarks them, knows what the result should be, then runs them through the machine, and the machine results matched their pre-known outcome of what the tally should be.
How many ballots are used in that test?
Chairman Supervisor, I don't know for sure, but I look to be several hundred at least.
And someone mentioned chaos. Hand counting, hand auditing ballots would insert chaos. We already do that. We already count the 1%, the 2%. Is that, is that a chaotic event?
Chairman Supervisor, no, it is not. It's a very orderly event on how we proceed for the 2% hand count.
And if there was an error, you, if there was an error and we had to expand that, you wouldn't, you wouldn't anticipate that would be a chaotic event, would you?
Chairman Supervisor, no.
And has your office received threats to safety? I've not heard about this before.
Chairman Supervisor, I have not personally had any threats against me. There have been some not-so-nice emails, but other than that, no specific threats against my physical harm.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And I want you to stay safe and our, we're very concerned about our employees. I think you've done a good job in preparing and my question to you is, if we increased the sample from 2% to 4% or 6%, so that it's more statistically valid. In another job, I test machines, I tested machines, and I did this very thing, the reliability, the accuracy of machines to a, to a high confidence level. And what I see is that maybe when the legislature set this up, two precincts seemed like a good number. I don't know that there was any math done behind this. Would it be too high a hurdle to count rather than two precincts, four precincts? Would that be too high a hurdle for the Elections Department?
Chairman Supervisor, it's, it's hard to say because depends on the turnout and which precincts that are selected. Some precincts have a very high turnout, so that would be quite a few more ballots to have to go through. I think the overall process is you do one race at a time. So it is a very, I think as Mr. Nelson said in the video, it is a very time-consuming process. And it's hard to say at this point what the impact would be to the Elections Department because we would have to increase staff and we are already, we will still be counting, tabulating, processing, late-earlys, provisionals, and so on. We don't really have, except for me probably, someone able to supervise that process.
And when you reviewed and found that there were zero errors in the 2%, did you look at the amount of time it took? Because I looked at some of the times, it looked like it took less than a day, maybe half a day to do that 2%.
Right. Chairman Supervisor, some previous elections had anywhere from 17% turnout to 40% turnout. It depends on the election and the time. Again, the, it's all based on the turnout of the precincts that are selected. How many ballots were cast at the polls for that particular precinct? We still have to add the 1% of the earlys, which right now, we have looking to be record turnout. Just for the 2%, if we, we would pull 1% of those ballots, so let's say we get 100,000 early ballots returned, that's 1,000 ballot, early ballots on top of the 2%. So if you have the 1,000 plus, you increase it, then it just will, I mean, it's hard to say what the impact is, but whatever you decide, we'll go forward and...
So just to clarify, above and beyond the 2% would be extraordinarily difficult and we shouldn't do it. Is that your recommendation?
I'm not going to recommend one way or the other. I'm only going to talk about what the process is and how we would, if you do go forward, we would have to put a plan together to conduct that expansion.
Well, presumably, we already have a plan in place in the event that the 2% doesn't match the machine, so that plan is the same plan, right? It's the same, it's his people, four people per...
Chairman Supervisor, I'm talking about the space to add more people. You have to have four times the people for each precinct. And I think anybody who's been over to our office knows we're struggling as it is for space and that's just something that we would consider. So we'll wait and see what happens.
And so one precinct takes four people. If you did two, it takes eight people?
Chairman Supervisor, correct. We have the eight people lined up for the 2% hand count.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments? Supervisor Goodman.
Just of our legal, just to make sure that we're very clear on this. Our county attorney, Kent Volmer, has instructed or given direction to this board as to what the law specifically states, in his opinion. And I, in fact, you know, whatever Kent says to me is the rule. He's, you know, I, my, they've been my cover all along, right? And so I go off of that. The other thing is, is, and I appreciate the gentleman that's in the audience that spoke earlier and for your service. A lot of family members that have done the same thing and sacrificed a lot. Their families have sacrificed a lot. My hat's off to all those that have served, even in the armed forces here, and I mean our officers. And so I appreciate and respect you for all of this. And I'm getting this right here, up to the side. Bottom line is, is these decisions are legislative decisions and they're giving us direction on what we can and can't do. And if there's some gray areas, they need to be straightened out with our legislators. They're the ones that need to be bombarded on this. So I know where I'm going to stand on this and I just want to make sure that there's other places to go. I don't know you or you're, the gentleman next to you, and I don't even know your legal background. And many times, I'm getting a lot of those type of emails, then I'm taking those emails and I'm turning it over to our county attorney's office and saying, "I need your help with this. I'm not an attorney." And so they've given me some counsel and direction as board member sitting in this position and I appreciate them for what they're doing. So I just want to make sure that you're, that I express my gratitude to you, specifically for what you've done and the service that you give. Thank you.
No, there's no response. I'm sorry, this is not a conversation. This is not a conversation, sir. You are out of order. You can be removed also. I'm sorry, this is not a, this is not a conversation.
Are you going to call for a...
I am.
I would like to talk then.
Are there, okay, I'm going to ask for a motion.
No, I wanted to make some comments.
You want to comment? Oh, well then, please comment.
Yeah. So many times, I wish we did roll call votes instead of the group votes because a lot of times, I'd like to explain my vote. So I, I feel we've put a good team in, into place and we need to have a good, fair election, which I believe it's going to be. Other than the incompetence of the first early primary, I think Pinal County's been pretty good. This is not Maricopa County, which is where all of the possible shenanigans were, and then everybody tried to cover it up and suppress whatever was going on. But I, I think everything's going to be fine, but if it does look like there's a major malfunction or shenanigans, then I think we have, should have the right to come back and then look at, look at what happens. But as of right now, I'm confident going forward that we have a good team in place.
All right. Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just make some brief comments to the certification of the machines. Our legal counsel brought forth evidence that he felt covered all that information. Whether or not we continue to use machines in the future, I guess that's something that the state legislature will have to take up. If the, if the people of the state of Arizona think 2% is not enough, they have a state legislator that they can reach out to and see if they can't get some statutory changes. So, you know, I just, I think it's been accurate enough and I don't, I believe it's going to be a fair election and I think that there's no reason to go down this path of changing the rules just before the election. I was very, very critical of other states and other legislative bodies that did that in the last election, two years ago, and I will, I don't want to commit the same sin that I, that I was critical of with somebody else. So I just think if this needs to be looked at, it will, we'll look at it next year's legislative, you know, body going forward. But there's, there's been no justification to really, to, to change the rules that are in place at this point in time. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So here we have a, a local body that has heard the concerns of constituents, whether it's Republican or Democrat. This is what good government should look like, that we should be responsive to people if you have a, an objectionable item, but still a concern because in the Constitution in the United States of America, we're concerned with the one. My wife is from Mexico and she, living in South Mexico, wanted to be a U.S. citizen so, so bad because she said she believed that even, even the hair on the head of an American individual citizen is valuable, that, so much so that the full, the full force of the government would come to save an American citizen in, in a foreign country. Somebody said, made a mention of the, a small minority of population wants this. You know what? We protect the rights of the individual and the smaller populations, the subsets, and we give them a voice. So that's what this is for. So I appreciate everyone's comments and, and we look forward to continue to serve you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing, hearing none, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny item number two.
Disapproved? Okay.
On second?
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor of disapproval?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion is disapproved. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Item number three is call to the public. And consideration and discussion comments from the public, those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance, although I have some. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later time.
Mr. Chairman.
And yes, Mr. Cerdi.
Perhaps explain that the Hancock item will have its own discussion.
Yes, Hancock will get time to discuss during that item. We'll get there in a minute, so we don't need to beleaguer this any longer. Are there any others that wish to care to, that wish to address the board and call to the public? If you've already addressed the board, I will allow it again. Mr. Reck. This day is a little bit unusual, so.
I'm Noel Reck from Casa Grande and I have a few things on my mind today. As I scanned today's agenda, there were many items I was pleased to see. Items regarding pet rescue, spay and neutering, inmate medical care, rental assistance, reading programs, housing assistance as related to homelessness, mental health, and substance abuse, support for kids and families, infrastructure, and assistance for female victims of sexual and domestic abuse. These are the type of actions that county governance should implement and I'm happy to see that indeed they are. Then there are items VWNX regarding drug interdiction and border security. While these actions are serious and worthy of thoughtful analysis and implementation, I would like to see more emphasis placed on the demand side of the importations of drugs. If there's no demand, there's no supply. And the push-pull factors that influence migration. The recent expose on Sheriff Lamb in the Casa Grande Dispatch raises red flags about a balanced approach to these issues. Truth would be an important factor in that regard. I've seen ad after ad during this election cycle demonizing migrants and the drugs they are supposedly bringing over the border. U.S. Customs and Border Protection statistics indicate that 85% of all drug seizures occur at our ports of entry, 10% at locations in between the ports, and 5% at interior checkpoints. The drugs are being moved by U.S. citizens, not migrants. It makes no sense that self-targeted migrants seeking asylum would at the same time bring in drugs. U.S. citizens are seen as receiving less scrutiny and are thus targeted to bring drugs across the border. One item that will be on the 11/16 agenda is the need to adjust the call to the public. Recent events indicates that these adjustments soon need to be made. Our society has taken a turn for the worse regarding basic civility. Differing views may at times become heated, but shouldn't be followed by personal attacks, intimidation, or violence. Witness the attack on Speaker Pelosi's husband and the sickening commentary that followed. Carrie Lake cracking jokes about the security at the Pelosi home. Donald Trump posting about the glass strangely being broken from the inside out. Trump Jr.'s online posting of a hammer and underwear as a Halloween costume, followed by references to Mr. Pelosi and his attacker being in a homosexual tryst. Elon Musk picked up on this, as did Dinesh D'Souza, the producer of 2,000 Mules, who posted the attacker had to be a sex partner or a male prostitute. And these are the people some put their faith in to demonstrate a supposedly stolen election? More lies and homophobia show the level of their credibility. None. We've seen it here in recent meetings where legitimate points of view have been met with personal attacks from a board member, where pointed statements have been directed at community members rather than addressed to the board, where an attempt was made to intimidate Roberto Ravelas by another speaker on his way out of the last meeting. A classless, futile attempt to intimidate a man who is beyond intimidation. I commend the board for addressing these issues, for discussion on the 16th, to end the incivility that currently permeates our political discourse and reinforce the ability of constituents to work productively with their elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reck. Next up would be Holly Child Baker. Are you, there you are.
I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to address a concern.
And please, just, oh, there you go.
My name is Holly Child Baker and I am speaking today on behalf of my family and the TTGI Limited Partnership. And we want to appear here today to voice our opposition to the proposed zoning change to allow the Cameron Solar Project. Between our family and our family partnership, we own 50 acres that are located directly across Palmer Road from the northeast corner of the site of the proposed zoning change to allow for the building of this Cameron Solar Project. Currently, the property that is owned by our family is leased out for farming and this has been the case historically as well. It has always been our intention to continue to lease the land for farming purposes until such future time that it would be appropriate to develop the land for residential or business use. We are adamantly opposed to this zoning change as we feel it will have a direct impact on our property values both now and in the future and that it is not consistent with the vision of development of the area that we were sold by ADOT and Pinal County during the approval process for ADOT's north-south corridor route. At that time, we were told that the freeway would support existing and future population and employment... and employment growth, which is why we did not oppose that project. While we have not had adequate time since learning of this proposed project to really thoroughly research all the potential impacts of a solar project of this size, we have learned that communities across the nation have opposed solar projects being built on farmland or land that can be used to develop housing communities and businesses that would provide jobs to those communities. Solar projects such as these can be built in outlying areas and on top of already existing industrial buildings. The application for this zoning change states that 375 to 425 construction jobs would be created during the building phase of the project, which appears to be, be about a one in a one-half-year timeframe. This is a time-limited creation of jobs, and in my research, I've learned that in many cases, these organizations bring in their own crews to build these projects. So it's really questionable how many of those jobs would actually serve the local community. They also state it would create up to three full-time positions during the phase it is in operation, which is about a 35- to 40-year lifespan of a solar farm. And so my question is, is how does this support long-term employment in this area? The application also states the project fits in with the existing land use of industrial, agricultural, and vacant land. However, we believe no consideration is really being given to the fact that the north-south corridor was approved based on future population and employment growth, such as building residential and businesses in the area. And while this area that our land sits in is currently an unincorporated area of county land, it is adjacent to Florence and very close to Coolidge, and could provide opportunities for incorporation in the future as these communities continue to develop and grow. We believe that if projects such as this proposed solar project are permitted in this area, it would prevent... Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Are there any others who wish to address the board during the call to the public? Ma'am.
Yes, hi. I'm really not prepared, but one gentleman.
That's okay, please state, just state your name and generally where you.
My name is Marion Fries. I live in Peralta Canyon. Just making a comment about Peralta Canyon Way and, and Peralta Road, or, yes, Peralta Road. I'm concerned about the camping that's going to be going on back there and all the traffic going down Peralta Road to 60 with the school there, the safety issues, the campers that will be coming and going, you know, the homes that are there that with Peralta Canyon Way would effectively be hollow and the residents that live over there. So I'm kind of on the fence about either way and was wondering if another roadway that would less affect the safety, the school, and the traffic going out to 60 or bothering the people at Sleepy Hollow, which really would have to go through a lot. You know, people have spent $500,000 for these homes and the traffic would be going over to Sleepy Hollow. So I'm not in Sleepy Hollow myself, but it just seems as though there should, should have been another roadway considered for all this development and the campgrounds. That's it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there others? Yes, I know you're there, sir. Go ahead. Come on up.
Hello, my name is Joshua White. I'm a climatologist, and I have studied here at ASU, and I'm from the area. I have some concerns about item 11 on your agenda today, the solar panel field. I'll try to be brief. Solar panel construction, especially in arid regions, generates a lot of dust. The increased output can disrupt photosynthesis and soil evapotranspiration in the area. It can damage crops and the local flora and fauna. Overall, the loss in soil moisture can generate excess dust. The techniques used to suppress the dust involve a variety of harsh chemicals, synthetic polymers, salts, fibrous mixtures, petroleum elements that they use to try to suppress the dust around the solar panel fields. These elements can get into the water table, especially where this is located. I understand that it's just north of the river. The solar panels themselves, especially in the low desert, are prone to lose efficiency due to dust proliferation and extreme heat, which are two products we have in excess in our desert, especially near the riverbed, which is a low channel, which tends to generate a lot of wind and dust, especially since our river system is typically dry. And this increase in dust can put a lot of extra pollutants in the air, heavy metals, pesticides, spore, fungus, bacteria, and this can increase respiratory disorders like asthma, pneumonia, psilocosis, valley fever. So I would like for you guys to just take a moment and consider the possible unintended consequences of building these solar panel fields on farmland.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there others that wish to address the board during call to the public? All right, seeing, hearing none. We'll close the call, and we will move on to number four, county manager's report. Mr. Liu, you're back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to mention Thursday before last, this, this board and district administrators from the board attended a strategic planning work session with our workforce development board so that our strategic priorities would be in line. And three of them that surfaced to the top, one of them was to direct and shape workforce readiness through education, GED preparation, and workforce development. Engage with employers in targeted sectors, advanced manufacturing, health services, natural renewable resources, aerospace and defense, transportation and logistics, and tourism. And then to align services in a manner that responds to the changing employer and environmental needs. And then I wanted to see if the clerk can play a video so the public can get an idea of how we work together with the education system, nonprofits, and the businesses to work strategically for success.
If you hate paying for cable TV, then you need to hear this. Your favorite movies, TV shows, and channels are meant to be free.
Hi, how are you doing? The name of our event today was reimagining our future. I think that any successful board has to have different personality patterns, different people that make decisions differently, process information differently. So to have constituents that are from the business sector, from the government sector, from the education sector, all coming together, now we have a lens that we can look through that maybe we wouldn't have if we were just sitting in our own spaces.
All communities have all that diverse population, and so a board needs, needs to consist of those people that are diverse too. We can't be too one-sided because we're serving the entire community. We have diversity in our community, we should have diversity on our board.
I'm in the business world and I need to go. Okay, well, what's going on in education? Guess what? We've got people that provide that perspective.
You know, I sit as a job creator and someone bringing new business and creating new jobs in the county, but listening to those that have existing businesses and their existing needs and their existing employees, I think helps me as a board member to become a better, more, better, more well-rounded board member to serve the community in its existing capacity, rather than just always thinking about what, what's coming down the pipeline? Who's coming in new and how can we serve them?
My district is very diverse.
Being in the room with Pinal County supervisors was incredibly valuable, hearing their pains and challenges through each of the districts. So we can sit back and go, ooh, they look differently in different geographic areas, even though Pinal County is not massive, but it's massive enough for us to go, okay, we need to be intentional about the problems that are over here, and guess what? They're a little bit different over here.
I think it was awesome today to get everyone in the same room, especially with the commitment by the board of supervisors to be there. As a board, we work at the pleasure of the board of supervisors. We're, we're elected by the board of supervisors to serve on the board. So to have them be present and listen to the hard work that we've gone through over the last two years for reimagining the future of the workforce.
How can we make Pinal County thrive, prosper? How can we make it thrive and prosper from the business side of things? How can we make it thrive and prosper from our workforce development side of things, which includes not just our existing workforce, but all of our youth that are up and coming that are going to be that future talent pipeline?
We can now take the input that we got from everyone today, and we as a board can now fine-tune the goals and the efforts and the strategic plan for the next two years.
It's got to come from people that have had X amount of experience, challenges, pains, and now how can we solve some of those pains and challenges and create solutions?
And that's it? Okay, well, thank you for your report.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
I would ask the chairman to, in deference to all the people waiting probably for the other item, could we skip the budget report? I don't know if they're here for that. I don't think so, though.
I doubt it.
Would it be all right to move, move to the Hancock thing directly and?
We, we can do that. I, I know everybody had to sit through all of this. It's painful, but that's, we get to do it all the time. So, okay, here we go. So let's, let's, let's jump ahead and we'll go to item number six. This is a public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of resolution number 2022-PZ-PA-013-21, resolution approving case PG-PA-01321, Hancock Communities. We'll just jump into, just as a note, these items will be discussed, items six through eight will be discussed together, and we'll vote on them independently. There will be, it's a public hearing, so the public hearing will be as to all three items. And Mr. Hogan, you are up, sir.
Chair, vice chair, board. Good morning.
Still.
So as you mentioned, the next three cases I'll be speaking about, we got three applications that we're going to go through. This is the Hancock Homes Hancock Communities case. In front of you, you have a image that is a rendering of what it could look like from the Center Point off of Hunt Highway. This is, this case is a single-family building, multifamily, hybrid gated development with attached and detached rental homes totaling approximately 228 units at a density of approximately 7.8 dwelling units per acre. So we have three applications. The first one is a non-major comprehensive plan, is to redesign 28-plus acres, and that's to go from urban transitional, from suburban neighborhood to urban transitional, which would allow this project. And then the next one is a rezoning for the same amount of acreage from GR, general rule, to multiple resident, which would allow it as well. And the last one is for the PAD for this project, the Hancock Homes community, which gives us more fine-tuning on the actual standards for the project. Subject is located on the south side of Hunt Highway at Sun Creek Drive, which is south of the Walmart shopping center at the San Tan Valley, Pinal County area. Applicant Hancock Communities landowner, the applicant for this case is, is Mr. Lake, Sean Lake. He, I believe, is here, right behind me. So this map here, and have you all seen this before, so I'm not going to dwell on it too much, but kind of just go over for those that haven't seen this before. This is a perspective map that shows you the location of this project. It's to the, to the very northern part of the Pinal County. The star represents the, the property in question and for all three applications. This more perspective, the red triangle is the property in question, and it's up against Hunt Highway to the south of it. The yellow triangle, as you can see there, is the property once again in question that we're talking about today, and it's right up against, actually, there's nothing behind it, but there, I believe there's, there's a Goodwill and some other stores that are kind of in that area, plus the Walmart. Plus, the red line is Hunt Highway. Area map kind of shows you just some more perspective on the site itself. Keep in mind, the property that's directly across the street there is state land still. This property is not. More perspective, that kind of just show you the property in question. Keep in mind that there's quite a few subdivisions within proximity. We got Solera to the south. Johnson Ranch is also kind of down in that area, right off of Hunt. We have Skyline to the north, and then there's San Tan Heights there, right behind the Walmart project. And then you can see there, there's that mountain that exists there right behind, right behind the project, right behind Solera. Comprehensive plan, now, we've got a comp plan and an area plan, so I've already covered the area plan designations, but this is the comprehensive plan, which is moderate-low density, and then we propose high density, but they also translate from suburban neighborhood to urban transitional per the area plan. We mentioned this because there was some questions about one and the other, so we just covered them both to be covered. This shows you the area plan now. The suburban neighborhood is off to the side, but we're, we're looking at the site itself, the triangle, the site, that's currently suburban neighborhood, and we're looking to, to get approval to change it to urban transitional, which would allow the project to move forward. Zoning, property is currently zone GR, and now we're asking for it to be multiple residence, which would allow this type of hybrid multifamily. So proposes a multifamily hybrid project, as I mentioned. So 20, 228 acres and density at 7.8, just under 8 DU, dwelling units per acre. Keep in mind, it's a single-story project, so it's got gated community, it has three points of entry. Lot of thought and process has gone into how this thing would work out. Originally, it was a, possibly a two-story project, but at the end of the day, it turned out to be a one-story. It's a mix of units, which include a different floor plan options from one-bedroom to three-bedroom units. We provide elevations in your packet to see all this. Zoning standards are pretty typical for this type of hybrid, and as I said, this is not just common in, in Pinal, but it's very common in the town of Gilbert, city of Chandler. It's just a new, a new, I should say, a new product that's being introduced all over the place because it fits a lot like a regular home, but it is technically considered multifamily. But these, these setbacks are pretty standard for this type of product. Their site plan, this gives you kind of an overall. As I said, there's three points of entry. There's two off of Hunt. One is in the center, one is out to the south of this project. Then we have one off the back that actually exits to the back of the project that goes to Gary. You can see there, that kind of lays out how the homes would be kind of stacked there. Like I said, one-story. Unit types, as I mentioned, is from one-bedroom to three, and they did a good job, in staff's opinion, on mixing that up a little bit. You can see the, the blue and the, the pink and the, and the yellow, but they tried to kind of mix them together to have a nice mixture of different unit types for this project. This is a landscape plan that shows you the type of trees and the plants and shrubs that they're going to add to this. Also shows you the, the kind of the circulation of the site. Lots of room. We made sure that they had, you know, the right driveways, enough parking. The amenities were kind of centralized. They also utilized where the retention basins would be, put a lot of trees around those areas. So they did meet the 18% open space, which is required for these projects. So a lot of thought, process has gone into this. Wall plan, this is just a real, just to kind of provide some more perspective as to the walls that are around it. The red ones show you the, the walls for the people living behind those, but there's walls all over this thing to kind of help buffer it from, the noise from not just Hunt Highway, but from the surrounding neighbors as well. This is just a quick look at the, the product type. You have the Arizona Ranch style, and these are pretty typical, real small little units. And you got the, the actual Prairie style, which is just another one that's changed up a little bit, little, break it up with some pop-outs and some windows around the thing. And this is image here is to, just some amenities that they had planned to do, some swing sets, some tot lots, the barbecues and the ramadas, pretty standard for these type of projects. Now, this image is, image to the north, as you can see, that's the, that's the state land. And then if you get to the south and to the east off of Hunt and to the west. Items for consideration, subject will be designated as high-density residential and also urban transitional per the San Tan area plan. So this does allow this type of multifamily. When I got here four years ago, we didn't have a lot of this type of product that would come to us. We'd get one a year, and most of those would fail. We've had about several applications that have come to us in the last year, and half of those have been approved. So we are starting to see more multifamily stock that's coming to us, and there was always this trend that we wanted different kinds. We have plenty of houses in Pinal County, plenty. However, we don't have a lot of this type of housing. So that being said, staff was working with the applicants to provide a product that was going to fit well in the area. So I just, as you know, staff received literally over 1,000 letters of protest for... So, I just, as you know, staff received literally over 1,000 letters of protest for this case. So, we've, have always supported high density, if it's done right. There were two neighborhood meetings that were held, that the applicant reached out to, to those around the area, and has tried to work with them to make this a better product. Applicant has made several changes to this. This project, you know, I know it's been kind of sitting for a while, but a lot of work was done in the beginning to get it to this point, to get it to the P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then to get it in front of the board. So, they reduced the density below eight. They've added a third vehicular access off of Gary Road, where there was only two required. They increased open space standards. They removed homes near the adjacent homes in Solera and Johnson Ranch, and they've increased building setbacks. They've also added additional lane to Hunt Highway, which wasn't, originally wasn't required, and they've done that. So, they're working with the county to try to make this as best possible. No stipulations on the first application, which is the minor comprehensive plan. There's one stipulation on the second one, and there's going to, on the PAD, planning and development, there's going to be 15 stipulations. Planning staff did forward a recommendation that was five to 1-1. So, I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have. I think we've kind of gone through this before, so I'm happy to help, or we have the applicant here as well.
Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Holguin? One question. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Do you know what the actual number of acres is? The presentation says 28.8. The assessor's report says 26.22, and the purchased, I'm sorry, the purchase document from the state says 26.216. The assessor's is 26.22, and the presentation says 28.8. Can you explain the difference?
It's 28.8. So, when they first came to us, the project didn't even have the correct APN number. It's because it was purchased through state land. So, we got that issue resolved. We made sure it was legal per the, per the ASI, went to the newspapers, so there was some changes on that, but at the end of the day, we were able to stick to the site plan that was, I should say, the legal that was, but sometimes with the ALTS, they changed, so that's where that happened. We apologize for that, but it's 28.8 to be correct. I just checked with the applicant.
Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Miller.
If you look at the assessor's, it always says this is unofficial, so I've been down that road.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Holguin, I think that's good. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Lake, you are also a presenter. You can raise the podium, too, I believe, to get the microphone up to your altitude.
I'll just lean in. Oh, wow. Learn something new every day. My name is Sean Lake. I am here on behalf of the property owner and the applicant of the project. We appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this morning and talk about this project. This is a tough case. I certainly have appreciated the opportunity to work with staff. We first started working with staff in the county on this project when it was state land, and this land was, went out to public auction, and my client, the current property owner, did acquire this from the state land department based upon what the expectations were for this property. This property, as I'll go through in my presentation, has been designated for residential development in the county's comprehensive plan, the San Tan plan, and in working with the staff, and we think that is. But it's also in an interesting area because it's in a transition area between single-family homes and commercial and multifamily and a Walmart. So, you're kind of in a transition area between different uses, less intense to far more intense, and so how do you develop a piece of property that is in that transition area? So, based upon that and starting to work with staff, we came up with a plan to try to address that, to try to address as much as we can the concerns of the neighbors to the south, but recognize and understand the multifamily or commercial that will be developed to our west and the existing Walmart, because this is a commercial node, this is a commercial area of the plan. This is a more intense area, the San Tan area. Those of us that have been out to the Walmart, been out to the future Home Depot, been out to that area, we understand. This is an intense area. This is not a rural area. This is a more intense area in San Tan area. So, we worked with staff, we extensively, we dropped the density, we made a lot of changes, and staff is recommending approval of this project. We presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they are recommending approval. And we'll also point out that this is consistent with a recommendation in the San Tan plan for this very purpose of what we're looking to do. As I pointed out, this site is really in between suburban neighborhood and the community center, the commercial node, if you will, as they call it in the general plan. So, we are the transition area. We are in between very different uses, very intense use. What is a reasonable land use is really the question of what comes down. What do you build between these two different very intense use and less intense use? And we're hoping that this plan is something that accomplishes that objective. As Gilbert pointed out, this is in the San Tan area special plan, and in the San Tan area special plan, this area is designated for residential uses, but if you read the San Tan area plan, it is encouraging diversity of housing, and we believe that this project provides that diversity of housing. In staff's staff report, they note that various types of housing are needed from lower to higher intensity residential development. That's one of the findings for this project, that they think this is a good use that transitions from a lower intensity to a more intensity area. Staff also points out, and I think Gilbert touched on it a little bit, there are a lot of homes in this area. 99.5% of the housing stock or livable area for businesspeople, teachers, students, nurses, 99.5 are single-family detached traditional homes. 0.5% are multifamily units such as duplexes or townhomes or apartments. So, there is extremely low percentage in this area of a diversity of housing. There's very, 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 very small diversity of product. To put that in comparison, the city of Phoenix is about 30% multifamily housing stock. Mesa is about 30%. Gilbert's about 20%. Queen Creek's about 13% to 15%. This area, which is a city, for lack of a better word, it is a big area, there is no diversity of housing in this area, and so we think this is a good use, and we think that's one of the reasons that staff is recommending approval with one of these findings. In looking further in the San Tan plan, the San Tan plan has land use strategies for what the San Tan plan, that was approved in 2018, what they would like to see in this area. They would like to encourage traditional, or transitional uses as one of the findings to strengthen the community. We think this is a good transitional use between a more intense area on our west and a less intense area on our south and Hunt Highway on our east. The second finding that the San Tan plan land use strategy would like to have is to focus on more housing diversity. The San Tan plan in this area is encouraging more diversity of housing. Why? Because we're 99.5% of the same housing product, not providing housing for a diversity of people, income, styles, jobs, et cetera. The next thing that they encourage is a high-quality development, and we think we have provided that with this proposal that we'll go through, with 33% common open space and 44%, 45% total open space within the project. If you look at the recommendations in the San Tan plan, there's different scenarios. The front one is just keep the San Tan plan as it is, no changes, and the scenario one, this is straight from the San Tan plan, says if you do this, you'll have minimal more commercial development, and your employment opportunities in the San Tan area will remain limited. I don't think that's the goal or the vision of this county. I think the county's forward-looking and wants to see more commercial development, wants to see more employment opportunities in the county. So, option B in the San Tan plan, if you look, this property is actually designated urban transition, which is exactly what we are proposing to do, as a recommendation for this property as a transition to encourage more employment, to encourage more commercial. You can see our property on the screen is designated or is highlighted in brown. That's exactly what we are proposing, is the recommendation of that San Tan plan and land use strategies. So, we're coming forward with the exact recommendation of the general plan, scenario B. And with that scenario B, they're, they're asking to increase the residential density around existing commercial nodes. This is a commercial node, the existing Walmart here, and the plan is encouraging to increase the density around those nodes to promote and foster more commercial development. As Dan Harkins used to say, you just need to get butts in the seats. You need to get people there around those commercial nodes so that you can foster more commercial development and more employment in the area. So, this is what we're doing. We are proposing that general plan for urban transition, which is the exact recommendation of scenario B of the general plan. We're requesting the commensurate zoning category and have worked with staff to come up with a PAD for our specific project. Let me talk briefly about the project. I think Gilbert did an excellent job, always does. It is a gated project. This project is tied to the zoning. This is not a bait and switch. We're not asking for something, the board, let's say they approve it, and then tomorrow we go build a three-story apartment project. That can't happen here. This is locked down and tied down through the PAD. We are proposing a gated, single-family patio home-type project of attached and detached single-story homes. All of them have private backyards with a density of around 7.9 units to the acre. We've exceeded the parking requirements and all the standards and have a substantial amount of open space. We have extensive amount of amenities, which is going to the quality. We have a lot of open space with a lot of high-quality amenities within the project. The architecture, as Gilbert pointed out, is high-quality architecture, will look very, very nice. These live, feel, act like single-family homes, traditional single-family homes, but provides an opportunity for, of a diverse or a different housing opportunity for, for people. In looking at the density, you have to look in the surrounding area. Directly to our south is Solera, which is about three units to the acre, three, three and a half. If you look a little bit south and a little bit east, you have Johnson Ranch, which is around six to seven units to the acre, and then you kind of wrap around the corner, you have that density there. We're at 7.9, and potentially to our west could have 18 units to the acre or a big-box retail. So, we think a reasonable land use of this property between a three-to-six-to-seven density between 18 units to the acre, 7.9 seems pretty reasonable land use of the property, especially given we're only requesting single-story homes for this area, a gated community with a high-quality development with a substantial amount of open space. We work with staff to create substantial buffers to our neighbor to the south. You will see, we removed all, and if I could point with, there we go, all the homes that back up to the existing homes in Solera. There are no homes that back up to back, home, back wall to back wall. We removed those there and put open space there. The separation between our homes and Solera, the smallest, is 95 feet, upwards to 215 feet. So, we have a big separation to buffer a single-family, single-story home from a single-family, single-story home, and I would argue those are very compatible uses, but nonetheless, we have a large buffer to try to build a project, a specific plan that would be compatible with what's going on there. We also designed the project with substantial amount of parking spaces. We wanted to make sure there were enough parking on site. We exceeded it by 110 spaces. We've worked with staff to do three access points into this project. You have Hunt Highway, where we will have a traffic signal at that midpoint. We will have a secondary access off of Hunt Highway. Staff asked us for this project to go work with the project next door, that property owner, and if this project is approved, then we will purchase an access out to Gary Road to have that backdoor access, so that the traffic can be dispersed from this community through Hunt as well as Gary to distribute it out, because we all know that Hunt Highway is busy. We get that, and that's why this project has the opportunity to do that, and so we've worked with that property owner to do that, should this project be approved. We've also worked with county staff to make improvements to Hunt Highway. We will be dedicating 20 additional feet from what the planning commission recommended. The recommendation of planning commission was a 55-feet ride of way on Hunt Highway. We will be dedicating 75 feet. Why? Because we were also asked to install and improve on our nickel a third lane on Hunt Highway. We will be doing that as part of this project, as well as the traffic signal and other roadway improvements. Now, what does that do? What that does, those improvements, as well as a traffic signal, will help the existing traffic situation, which is bad today. If you look at our traffic study and you look at the access on Solera, which is, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but a little bit south, little bit south and east of here, Solera has an access on Hunt Highway. Their morning turning movement has a waiting time of about 41 seconds. With our improvements and the traffic signal, it will drop to 30-second wait time. The afternoon PM peak hour, their wait time will go from 143 seconds down to 26 seconds. So, they will go from a level of service F to a level of service C with this development. So, we're actually improving the traffic situation with this project and this development and the improvements we would be doing to Hunt Highway. Going to the north, Skyline up here, our traffic study identified that the AM peak hour track turning movements are currently 78.9 seconds. With this project and the improvements we would do with this project, the turning movements would drop to 22 seconds, and then the PM peak hour would go from 43 seconds down to 20 seconds. If you compared this project to other types of development, because my client owns the property, the property's going to be developed, what is a good use of this property that transitions between the commercial node and the hub, the intense area, and the existing Johnson Ranch and Solera project? What is a good use? We think this is a good use. The traffic study, we would be generating about 1,600 trips, 1,600, 1,700 trips. If this were developed as a similar, single-family, traditional development, that would generate about 1,608. If this were developed as commercial, the numbers go way higher. You would have substantially more traffic on this site with between 5,500 to 11,000 trips to this area, making further congestion in this area along Hunt Highway. So, we think this is a good, reasonable land use of the property and consistent with the representation when we purchased it from the state land department. So, what are the justifications? In working with the neighbors, we substantially decreased the density of the project in working with them, from 11 down to 7.9. We believe we're a good transitional use between existing commercial node and commercial development to our north and west and existing residential to our south and Hunt Highway on our east. We believe this is consistent with the recommendation scenario B of the existing San Tan plan with, that was just approved four years ago. This is scenario B. This is the recommendation of the San Tan plan for this property specific. You saw that it was highlighted brown on that San Tan plan. We believe this fulfills the goals of the general plan, which is to provide a diversity of housing, a diversity of housing that's compatible with the existing neighborhood. And we believe with the compatibility, we carry that forward by providing a single-story-only development. It will provide a diversity of housing, that's single-story, to match what's there. So, we think this is a good use of the project. So, with that, I just listed a few things out of why we think this is a good use for this property. The property is going to be developed by this property owner, but we think this is a good use and would request your support. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the big issues that have come to our attention or the complaints is you will not have 100-year certificate of water. Is that fair? Is there enough water? Which AMA are you in, so on? Could you explain the water situation?
Chairman, board member, I'm not a water expert. The way the state law is written with water, rental properties do not need to get a 100-year certificate because you don't, when you go in and buy a piece of property, you don't have fee ownership and you have it indefinitely. I mean, that is your property, and so you have to have that 100-year certificate, whereas if you're rental and they do run out of water, they can just say you're going to run out of water and you're out of luck. So, it's more of a sophisticated situation. So, they're the first ones that wouldn't get water. Having said that, we know there is a water issue, but not in this area. Having said that, we know there is a water issue, but not in this area. In Casa Grande, in that area, the only thing that is being developed is rental property because they don't have 100-year certificate. In this area, it's a different AMA in a different situation.
Who is the water provider? Is there a water provider at this area or are you on a well?
There will be a water provider and I'm...
Epcor?
Yep.
So, they have a designation. They're not even, so the 100-year issue is a nonstarter almost. Okay.
And so, the question I brought up earlier about how many acres is it? That is a question that's been brought to my attention. So, could you explain why, for the benefit of the public, the difference between 28.8 and so on? Is there a survey and so on?
The survey that we had came out at 28.8. Now, I'll have to go look at those specific documents. I haven't looked at the document that you're reciting, but I'm happy to look at that later on. But the survey that we had had it at 28.8.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Supervisor Serting?
You mentioned that the lights will go down to 40 seconds from over a minute. Is that correct?
The, so what will happen? The turning movement at various different points, the wait time, so if you're at Solera or you're at Skyline and you're waiting to make a turning movement at Hunt Highway, because we're installing this traffic signal here and the improvements that we're doing to Hunt Highway, traffic will function more efficiently and your wait times will go down substantially.
Okay, so it's not about the timing of the lights?
No. But the light creates gaps in the traffic, and the gaps in the traffic then create situations where you have a safer turning movement.
Okay. I was mishearing that then because in my experiences, being a mayor and councilman, people hated quick-change lights because only two or three people get through, and they were always asking, can we slow down the lights so that more people can get through?
Maybe, I apologize if I didn't explain that clearly. The traffic light at our site will be a normal standard. It's not a quick-change light. The turning movement at Solera or Skyline are not lit intersections. They're just a full turning movement with no traffic light. But because there's no traffic light, they have to wait now a long time to exit onto Hunt Highway. And what will happen with this traffic light in the middle is it will create gaps in the traffic, and those gaps in the traffic will allow people turning out of Solera to our southeast and people turning out of Skyline to our northwest, a large gap so that they can have a safer turning movement out onto Hunt Highway, thus reducing the level of service or enhancing the level of service from an F to a C.
Okay, thank you.
Other, Mr. Goodman, sir?
Thank you. And I don't know if we, this is the point to bring it up, but, and I see Andy's in the audience out there. So, the other thing is, is that I know some of the emails that I've received pertains to your exit onto Gary Road, and that's where more than likely the access is going to be if they want to go to Walmart, for instance. We've got a very bad corner in that area, already some high usage that we have. And so, at some point, Andy, I'd like you to come and address and even talk about the light that's going to be installed and at what point that light's going to be stalled coming in and out of Walmart, which is, we're already addressing some of these issues that people are talking about. We've been working on that particular area for some time. But anyway, I just want to make sure that the public's aware of some of the things that we're doing.
All right. And before Mr. Wanamaker jumps up, Supervisor Miller had a question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I don't know, this may actually have to be answered by our staff, but as I look at Johnson Ranch and Solera, at Johnson Ranch, appears to be a golf course and a mountain in there. If you were to subtract those acres out, those densities will be close to seven. I mean, granted, but the golf course you can't build on anyway, so I really, I think the density is almost consistent. Granted, you don't have a golf course, but, and I don't know if staff wants to look that up and answer my questions, but that property was purchased by the state land with the intent to put residential on it of some type, whether it be rental or whether it be single-family homes. That was, and I know the, a little bit of the process that you have to go through to even get state land to put something like that into an auction, there's a lot of, a lot of front-end activity by potential buyers for those types of property. So, I mean, it wasn't a secret that this was going to be a residential type of product that gets built there. And I don't know if you want to opine on that whole process, even just on a little bit. Let me kind of finish all my statements and then you can address some of it. And I guess probably my comments are not really questioned, but when we did the Santan Plan, I said, the market will determine what people want. And this rental project product is becoming more and more common throughout the state of Arizona due to the cost of land, due to the cost of construction, and due to the age of the residents of Arizona. They don't have, they're not intending to want to take, mow the lawn, take care of all this stuff. If I, this is the question, does it not have something like a maintenance or a homeowners' association that will maintain the project in its entirety as you move forward? If you could address the potential, kind of the range of what you think that the rental will be, I mean, what the rent will be moving forward? And then, I heard you correctly, it is a gated community as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I don't know if you want to answer?
Let me address some of those questions.
Address a couple of those items for me.
The rents are going to be around 1,500, 1,800 to 2,500, 2,600, and then, I mean, there's options that you can add on to increase your rent. So, quite honestly, the rent's going to be more than a lot of people's mortgages who are living in the area. And so, this is not low income, this is not intended to be low income. This is a transitional-type density use where I'm a schoolteacher, I'm a fireman, my wife and I, we want to find a place, but we're not sure where to live, or quite honestly, we can't afford the 8% interest rates right now to buy a home. And so, this is a good use until the market kind of settles down or a good place to go live with me or my family. So, it's a good diverse product that's currently not offered out there. So, that would be the rents. The maintenance of the property, there would be full-time people that take care of everything and make sure that the rules and regulations. If you violate the rules, you're in breach or violation of your lease agreement and you're out. These are not short-term rents. These are year leases. These are not come-for-a-month type of a situation. The density of the project, we are at the extreme low end between what could be developed to our west or commercial as far as intensity, down to the Johnson Ranch, which would be between three, and I'd say three and seven right in there. We're at 7.9. So, if you take what is a reasonable land use of this piece of property between a more intense use on our west, that's already zoned, that property's already zoned, and what is to our south? We think, you know, going from three to seven to 7.9 on ours to 1,800 or more intense commercial is a good transition at the very low end. So, we think this is good. And again, the single-story density transition. And then the state land expectation, when the state land sells the property, they look at the general plan, the buyers look at the general plan, you talk to staff in the county, and what is the expectation? Because the state land is supposed to sell land based upon maximizing the value for schools. That's how we fund schools in this state, is with state land sales. That was the trust that was set up long, long time ago. And so, they sold it based upon that, and we're just carrying that forward, that residential land use based upon that and carrying forward scenario B of the Santan Plan, which calls this area to be urban transition.
Are there other questions from the board?
Can I just, I just want to touch base on, the water issue always continues to come up. I believe this is in the Phoenix AMA, I believe it's Epcor. Again, Epcor will provide you, if they haven't, a will-serv letter.
Yes.
If they cannot serve you the water, they're not going to give you a letter. That's just, that's that check and balance. The whole certificate of assured water, this is kind of to help everybody understand that process. It's a, it's a Consumer Protection Act through the real estate law, has nothing to do, the certificate of assured water is issued by ADWR, but it is issued for a consumer protection. You'll find it in a public report if you buy a house.
And that's a good point. I apologize. If there's no water, we won't get a will-serv letter. It doesn't mean that they don't have the water, and because you're rental, you get water that they don't have. If they don't have the water, we don't get a will-serv letter.
So, just kind of address some of those issues there, and I won't continue because I have others to say, but it doesn't really pertain to this topic.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board?
I think Chris is here to address.
Chris, really quick, could you come address this? And then, right after your presentation, I know I hate to beleagure, but we're going to take a five-minute break because we've been here for a while.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Chairman, Board Members. Chris Wanamaker, County Engineer. To answer Supervisor Goodman's question, we are planning a new traffic signal on Gary Road at Dawn Road, which is the western entrance to the Walmart. If you've been there, the traffic can get a little congested, and there's some sight visibility challenges with the curvature of the roadway and the vegetation. So, that is currently in design right now. Now, I was looking on my phone for the schedule, but I think we're still probably at least two years out for construction due to construction costs and prioritizing other signals that we need in the Santan Valley area. So, I don't have an exact date. I wasn't able to find that, but does that answer your question?
It does, and I'd probably strongly recommend that we go somewhere and try to find the money to make it happen sooner. So, anyway.
Certainly, thank you.
Strong recommendation.
Okay.
Another quick question from Supervisor Miller.
Just real quick, Andy, while you're there, the timing of those signals will be determined on some traffic volumes, and then our staff will set a timing that will work. Is that, isn't that how that works?
Yeah, the timing of signals is usually set to promote the predominant movement, which would be forward movement along Hunt Highway, and then accommodations will be made to, based on the amount of actual traffic, trying to make turns. And these are things that will be adjusted as traffic normalizes.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? In that case, I hate to do it to you, but I'm going to take a five-minute recess, really five minutes. Okay, we're back in session. I have some, since there's no other questions from the board, I have a few public comments. There's about an hour's worth of public comments here. That's hence the break. So, we'll start, I'm just going to keep it to three minutes because I don't want to keep going forever and ever today. So, first up would be Carolyn, uh-oh, Garceau? Did I get that pretty close? It was in code, you know, it says cursive. I was like, oh, God, you know.
My name is Carolyn Garceau. I live in Solera at Johnson Ranch. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, who has Alzheimer's. He is very passionate about this project, and he wants me to read his thoughts on the Hancock Project. My name is Leonard Garceau. My wife and I live in Solera, excuse me, at Johnson Ranch. This is our 15th winter in Solera. We chose Solera over seven other retirement communities because of the country setting. It's a smaller community and a safe environment. Commissioners or supervisors, as elected officials, we feel it is your duty to take care of the residents of Pinal County and protect our property values. Please vote no to allowing the building of multiplex, multifamily housing between Solera and Walmart. These apartment buildings will have a negative impact on the quality of life for all residents in this area. Is tax revenue in Pinal County more important than its residents? We already have increased traffic, water issues, concerns over what this will do to our property values. Where are your homes? Would you like an apartment building in your backyard? Progress is good, but progress should enhance the quality of life. If you vote to approve the building of these apartments, you are devaluing the residents that live here for financial gain. Vote no and continue to protect us and our beautiful community of Santan Valley. Thank you for letting us speak.
I've got one more. Thirty-six seconds. Oh, thirty-two. Right now, we got to go out, our community, sorry, I've got a little, going around, roundabout there that there is there, you go, there, there's, traffic is backed way up. You go out the back gate, they come up over that hill going about 50 miles an hour, and you better get on the throttle. So, thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you, the Garceaus. All right, Mr. Clark, Gary Clark.
I'm Gary Clark, and I live at 1153 West Desert Aster in Santan Valley. There are multitudes of emails that have been sent to the Supervisors and Planning Department. Gilbert Ogden's binder contains reams of these emails that are primarily requesting the project be denied by the Board of Supervisors. I would imagine that these requests far outnumber any supporting emails. Many of these emails are from residents in the Johnson Ranch area, were generated from a request that was published on November 23, 2021, from the management of Johnson Ranch HOA. Copies of that notes are in the binder Mr. Ogden has. Along with these emails are 921 signatures of individuals who did not support this project. The 2021 Arizona Revised Statute of Res zoning states that all rezonings adopted under this article shall be consistent with and confirmed to the adopted comprehensive plan. In the case of uncertainty in construing or applying the conformity of any part of a proposed rezoning to the adopted comprehensive plan, the resulting zoning shall be construed in a manner that furthers the implementation of and not be contrary to the goals, policies, and applicable elements of the comprehensive plan. From the Pinal County Comprehensive Plan, a couple of key principles in the drafting of zoning regulations are protecting of the public health, safety, and welfare, protection from undesirable impacts on adjacent land. Pinal County vision is the heart that ensures the county's quality of life is maintained over time. In the applicant's documents submitted for approval, in the developer's experience says adjacent property values would not be effective. There is no supporting documents from any source to support this statement. However, over 20% of the property owners within 300 feet of this development believe their property values will be impacted. This is one reason why we're here today. This protest by these owners has triggered the responsibility of you as Board of Supervisors to have to vote with a supermajority. This area is zoned as general rural, however, as illustrated earlier, is designated as suburban neighborhood and should be considered to keep that versus allowing it to be redesigned as urban transitional. Supervisors help maintain the values of Pinal County, open spaces, rural atmosphere, and environment in the night sky with clean air and a sense of community.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Barbara Ross.
Chairman McClure and Supervisors, I am Barbara Ross. I live on North Skyline Drive in Santan Valley, and it's in the Solera Development. I'm here today to ask you to seriously consider the safety impacts of approving a multifamily, high-density residential project that's going to pour thousands more cars onto Hunt Highway, particularly in the Hunt Highway and Gary Road area. Now, the applicant had a traffic study that was done, but that studied the time period from 2018 to 2020. At that time, the Gary Road intersection had a safety rating of E and F, the lowest level on the rating system, and the number of cars per day was 39,000 vehicles. There were further 159 accidents during that time period. But in a more recent traffic study done early this year by James Smith of the Pinell County Economic Development, the volume of traffic has increased from 39,000 vehicles per day to 45,242 vehicles. That's a 14% increase in just two years. And the applicant's representative said earlier that this project will produce 1683 additional vehicles on the road per day. But I ask you to consider the big picture. There's already over 45,000 vehicles a day, so now you're going to add 1683 vehicles per day for the Hancock development. Using that same number, you have the Watermark Project that's been proposed. You have the Pulte Homes Project that's already under construction. And then you have the commercial Home Depot development. And the applicant has indicated there's about 6,000 trips a day for Home Depot. So now we're up to 56,000 vehicles a day. This is a real safety concern. We purchased our house in 2018, and the increase in the volume of traffic on Hunt Highway is a real concern. We hear vehicles with their sirens on a daily basis. There's a lot more accidents. And the minimal traffic proposal by the applicant of adding a turn lane and a stoplight is not going to improve the volume of congestion on Hunt Highway. Your decision here today is going to affect residents of Santan Valley for decades. The developer will do his project and move on. But I ask you to do the right thing here and vote no.
Thank you. All right, next is Emmett Underwood.
Hello, my name is Emmett Underwood. I live in Santan Heights, which is right off of Gary and, near Gary and Hunt. It's my first meeting, so I'm a little nervous. Give me a second. We urge you to deny this request because I'm part of the HOA. I go there every month. One of the reasons why I know about this meeting is because during our HOA, we violently, or we adamantly oppose this project. It's one of the, it's the main reason why I'm here, to help, to support the HOA as well. And Johnson Ranch is also here as well, so I was happy to hear that. The decisions you guys make today will affect the traffic and the residents of that area. Already, off of Santan Heights Boulevard, where there are two schools there, the increased traffic due to the Pulte and other homes that are currently being built is having a negative effect on Santan Heights Boulevard, which houses two schools and does not have established drawing lines on. So the increased traffic already between the residents who are not able, who do not follow the traffic laws have been a safety concern. I did hear from the gentleman saying that the increase, or the traffic light there will help alleviate some of the traffic. But due to, and already increase, two, oh, I see, 228 units will equal double that amount, at least in vehicles being traveling on our roads, which does increase safety risk and, sorry, I'm just a little nervous. That's pretty much all I have to say about that. The decisions you guys make today will affect us. I'm a new homeowner, and hearing this has been not the happiest of, or, that's all I'm going to say about that. Sorry. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. Gary Maudlin.
Chairman McClure, Supervisors. I'm Gary Maudlin. I live at 30262 Bismarck in Santan Valley. I'm the President of the Board of Directors for Solera Johnson Ranch, which consists of 727 homes on 225 acres, which does not include the mountain or the golf course, with a density of, as Mr. Lake alluded to, approximately 3.2 dwelling units per acre. Two weeks ago, in this very chamber, you heard from Jennifer Hill of Locate Incorporated. Her firm was contracted by the Pinell County Economic Development Department to discuss that $1.6 billion of retail leakage from Santan Valley. During her presentation, she stated that perhaps what has been happening in Santan Valley with all the building of homes, to which she referred to as rooftops, may be short-sighted as we look into the future of the area. She went on to state at that time that there's already 2,000, or 2,200 multifamily residents approved within Santan Valley that just haven't been built yet, with perhaps thousands more to come. And Gilbert even mentioned that in his presentation. Her recommendation was that a long-range plan be needed, is needed to be developed that looked at how to retain those funds in Santan Valley. She alluded to the fact that perhaps slowing down on the building of homes would be beneficial. Step back, take a look at the big picture. During that meeting, several comments were made. Chairman McClure stated, "Can't say just keep building houses." Vice Chairman Searcy, "It is in my belief that if we finish every housing development that is plotted now, we will have plenty of houses. We need to improve the quality of life." And Supervisor Miller stated, "Residents do not want high-density housing." Keep this in mind as you follow your conscience. Consider the safety, health, and welfare and the quality of life of the residents of Santan Valley. Today, you'll be making a decision that may well affect your legacy. That decision will show whether you stand with the residents of Santan Valley or with the developers. Please deny this proposal. Take time to develop a construction plan within Santan Valley and work with community representatives for input, as suggested by Jennifer Hill from Locate Incorporated. Don't allow Santan Valley become nothing more than a bedroom community for Maricopa County." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maudlin. Steve Walbe.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Walbe, and I live in Johnson Ranch. I've spoken here before opposing this applicant, and I stand here to do this again, as do many other people, as you can tell by all the black shirts and black tops and sweatshirts and everything that everybody's wearing, kind of in solidarity of opposing this effort. So there's a lot of people here waiting on your vote. And there's a lot of people that aren't here waiting on your vote, that are waiting to hear from us and to hear from you. I don't think any of us, and I'll speak for just myself, I'm not opposed to growth, and I'm not opposed to higher-density housing, and I'm certainly not opposed to affordable housing. What I am opposed to is doing it right there in that spot on Hunt Highway, which I think we can all agree is an undersized highway. It's undersized for the traffic that it is bearing, and it's undersized for the traffic that's coming toward it in additional housing that's planned in the area. So I would ask you to consider, please, you know, not doing this at that specific location. The applicant argues that Johnson Ranch, where I live, is between three and seven units per acre. Well, I think that's hocus-pocus because it makes it sound like, well, we're just like Johnson Ranch. They've got seven. We've got 7.9. That's so close. Well, how many of them are threes and how many of them are sevens would be my question to the applicant, and what the real, real number is. So, don't be fooled by some of that kind of language that says, hey, we look just like Johnson Ranch because we're only 7.9. Just barely, by the way, a hair under the designation of the maximum that you can't go over. All right. We need, we need more commercial in our area. We need restaurants. We don't need any more car washes, gentlemen. We just don't. I know you've heard this a lot. My time is almost up. I've said about all I wanted to say. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Darcy Banning. Darcy Banning.
She's in Ironwood.
She's in Ironwood Room. There's a little delay on the video. Oh, I hear footsteps again.
That's Kelsey Goan.
Sure we're not haunted? We'll give her just a couple of seconds to get here.
Who's on deck?
Yes, after Ms. Banning will be Vicki Esparo. Are you in this room?
Yeah.
Oh, she had to leave? Okay. Then after, after Ms. Banning will be Jess, I think it's Mattson or Matthew. I'm sorry, I can't.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Darcy Banning. I live at 69 West Sundance Court, Santan Valley. I'm opposed to this addition for Hancock. People have mentioned traffic already. They can say what they want about putting in traffic lights. All that does is make everything back up all the way from Santan Flats, one direction, all the way down to Anthem, the other direction. Depending on the time of day, you can come to the stoplight there at Gary Road, and you can be backed up and wait for, you know, a half hour to 40 minutes in order to get from Gary Road down to Solera. With the water situation, I came from Colorado. I know that in the Denver area, they've got water rights for the Colorado River. They pump water from the Colorado River through the mountains into the Denver area. The lakes, Lake Mead and so forth, are all drying up. We don't have enough water in this area. I drive school bus for the Florence School District part-time, and even trying to get around the traffic, the bus routes have to start early in the morning. School times have to be adjusted because of the traffic. Living in Solera, we hear sirens not only once or twice, but multiple times a day. People are running traffic lights. There's accidents. This is not a good plan for that area. The presentation by the developer sounded like a mafia guy from Chicago or something. I was trying to convince you of something that shouldn't actually happen. These developers come in and they sell you bill of goods and then they leave, and we're stuck with what's left over. So, please, think carefully about this. There's been a lot of good comments here, and I would appreciate you voting no on this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banning. Jess, Matthew, or Mathis? I'm sorry, I don't know. Jess, Mathis, or Matthew? I had to leave. Okay, thank you. Okay, then Ross Clemenshaw.
He had to leave, also, sir.
All right, thank you. How about Pat Churchill? A winner.
Surprised you could read that chicken scratch.
Always better than some. I just.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and distinguished board members. I live at 30831 North Rolow Way in Johnson Ranch, and my brother, who couldn't be here, so I'm speaking for him too, is at 31917 Larkspur in the Solera Development. I was a city councillor in my other life for 26 years, so certainly know what you're facing today. It's development, land, water, and roads are the biggest contentious issues and the biggest headaches. But what I would like to do is say that first, I'd like to give kudos where it's due. I believe that we've been here 13 years, and the exponential growth has been startling to say none. When we came here, Hunt Highway was that nice little dark two-lane road, which we quite enjoyed. We're rural people. So, kudos to Pinell County for keeping up with the transportation infrastructure. That's not an easy thing. But I would like to speak to the planning aspect of this development. The developer spokesperson, Sean Lake, did a very good presentation explaining the transitional urban development. But I would like to more talk about community. I believe that sound development gives us sound communities. This seems like a transitional community, not just a transitional housing development. And I look at the high density. We know there's a need for them, and we've seen it at north side of Rittenhouse. It makes sense there. It's very urbanized. There's great artillery roots in, out, north, south, east, west. And I just believe that it's a very different look here in Santan Valley. I would like to see them remain more to the, to the original plan. You have a very difficult job here, challenging times, exponential growth means exponential problems. I understand that. But I really hope you take into consideration the comments today. It's not just about traffic and water. It's also about building communities, sustainable communities, having that cohesiveness in communities. I'm not sure that rental areas actually are conducive to that sort of life. Kudos to the board and the developer for actually scaling down their project. I do, it's much nicer than it was. So, that's my comments today. So I hope you, thank you for your time and consideration in the matter. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Rolf Jacobson.
I am Rolf Jacobson. Live in Solera at Johnson Ranch, 294 West Twin Peaks Parkway. I am a seasonal resident. This is the ninth year my wife and I have been down here. So, I listened to Supervisor Goodman sponsored a Zoom meeting the other night, and I listened to that, and Mr. Lake answered some questions. But I don't think he answered, he answered the questions like a slick salesman, not always adhering to the actual numbers. I'm not going to, I went through a lot and looked at particularly the traffic issue, and I'm, I have a master's degree in statistics, so numbers don't bother me. And so, when I looked at it, using numbers from traffic engineer, numbers that every traffic engineer should know, I don't see how the residents of the new development are going to be able to make a left-hand turn onto Hunt Highway. If you have, if that light is green for those residents for a minute and red for two minutes, this is a reasonable estimation, I thought. The number of residents that are going to be coming out of that development between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM and returning between 4:00 or 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM, it doesn't support the numbers. You can't get people out You can't get people out of there fast enough. You can get about seven to 10 people in a minute on a left turn lane. But the numbers coming out of there will be four, about, about four people per minute, if you work out the numbers. Three to four people a minute, depending on whether you figure 50% or 70% of those people are, of those 1,954, which was the number that was given at the previous meeting, not the 1,600 that Mr. Lake has suggested. So, you will only, I can give you the numbers writing down, I'm not going to run through all of them here. But basically, the numbers don't add up. You are going to have people backing up and I don't think the residents of Hancock Development are going to be real happy about that. Otherwise, I would say you aren't going to be able to turn left out of Solera because the traffic's going to be backed up. I would propose that you wait until, wait to determine any issues here or make any decisions until you have evaluated the traffic from Home Depot and the traffic, potential traffic from the west area across the street, the Stella Watermark, the San Tan Heights Development.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Boy, it sure is cold in here.
It is, that's why we wear jackets.
Yeah, my name is Roger Novak and my address is 32193 North Larkspur Drive in San Tan Valley. My wife Linda, 50 years, and I have lived in Solera for 20 years.
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Let me start all over?
No.
Okay. Okay, so my wife Linda, 50 years, and I have lived in Solera for nearly 20 years. And together, we're both opposed to this high-density development. We were very happy to settle in San Tan Valley in Solera, a 55-year-old-plus community. And Solera is different than a lot of communities. It's not straight roads and quick left turns and right turns, going around hills and up around bands. It's really pretty. Now, you're talking about putting in a high-density community right next to our beautiful community. And when I say beautiful, I don't just mean the looks of beauty, the beauty of the community, the feeling of community inside Solera. I don't think you're going to have that same beauty. You may have a pretty house, but you're not going to have that beauty of a community in this development. Now, you guys as board supervisors, you have a lot of responsibilities over here right now. You just decide whether this unproven experiment of high-density buildings in San Tan, is it really working? I know you've got a few in the works, but nothing is actually working, nothing is completed yet. We don't know what's going to happen over a period of time with these communities. And I think it's unfair to force this upon us. I mean, you can see how many people, you can see how many people here are opposed to this. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. And you've heard a lot of things about the negatives of the area. The drain on fire protection, the drain on traffic, the increased accidents, the drain on the Sheriff's Department, the drain on the Board of Education. All this stuff is going to happen. And you guys have the power to stop it right now. I'm sure the developer has all kinds of pretty stories, statistics. Being a retired engineer, statistics can tell you anything they want, anything you want them to say. And kudos to his salesman. So, I'm asking you to please deny this, this high-density project in Solera. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mary Lou, and I'm going to guess, Banning? I probably have it wrong, from 69 West Sundance Court? I don't know. Is she here? She's that way? She went that way?
She's in the other.
Next, after, after Mary Lou will be Rob Rose, then Kenneth Bell, then Sandra Russell, then Gene Stockton. Hopefully, if you can all get on deck here. I'm sorry?
Andy Russell.
Just so everybody knows, we're down to four. Nobody there? Okay, then we'll, I assume that Mary Lou had to leave. We'll come to Rob Rose, please. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, people. My name is Robert Rose. I live on North Burnham Road in San Tan Valley. I came here regarding this high-density housing. I'm a Realtor who bought a home near Magma and Gary two and a half years ago. So, that's the only horse I have in this race. I ask that the supervisors deny the zoning charge or change that would allow high-density construction. I've watched with dismay and sadness the results of numerous collisions at Gary and Hunt Highway intersections and both slightly east and west of that intersection. My own vehicle has almost been hit three times by, at these locations, when others ran lights or ignored my right-of-way. I strongly object to granting a zoning change or modification to the two parcels requested by the owner company that owns these properties. I'm totally surprised that county planning recommended approval of this zoning change. In my opinion, these parcels are some of the worst locations to consider. And they seem to have rubber-stamped high-density development to be allowed to proceed. Excuse me. The proposed zoning and construction location is adjacent to one of the most dangerous and incident-rich traffic-light-controlled intersections in the county. I've witnessed about a 500% increase in traffic on Gary since the Magma extension was completed just this year. My neighbor, Sheriff Mark Lamb, might be able to document much of the higher traffic counts. The collisions and the speeds of the vehicles through this area have increased dramatically. If this zoning variance and change is allowed to go forward from here, I feel part of the pain that Solera owners and residents will be forced to endure with their limited gate, current gated access. All nearby intersections and roads could experience a huge increase in traffic over the current level. My partner, who could not attend because of work obligations, asked me to ask if any of the board of supervisors received funds to reelection budgets from the applicant owners. If so, she asked if you will recuse yourselves from voting on this issue to avoid conflict of interest. After her question, I would like to ask the supervisors if you have already decided how you will vote on this, irrespective of the opinions of the large number of black-shirted residents who came here to oppose the zoning changes. Done.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Just so you know, we're not allowed to respond. So, I'm just letting you know, that's part of the rules here. We're not being mean, we're just following the rules.
Kenneth Bell, a new resident in Solera, about a year and a half, 608 West Twin Peaks Parkway. Mr. Chairman and board supervisors, consider the following three grounds upon which to vote disapproval. Ground number one is a finalized sale. About a decade ago, the state sold the acreage in question to a private bidder who willingly entered into the purchase agreement with full knowledge of the land's current zoning. Why is it incumbent upon the board to revisit this sale? Why change its terms? If you vote to disapprove the ordinances and uphold the existing zoning, you're signaling to me and to our neighbors that zoning in Penal County has backbone, precedent is being set, and that we can trust what's said before us. Ground two, compatibility. Which zoning designation is more compatible with the proposed development's closest neighbor? That would be Solera. Is it suburban neighborhood or urban transitional? Is it general rural or multiple residents? Is it standalone, single-family dwellings or 228 rental properties that look like houses? Which of these two options best preserves or enhances existing neighborhood character? And of course, ground three, traffic congestion and safety. We are an auto-dependent neighborhood, surprising. We use our autos to do the simplest and closest of shopping. Hunt Avenue and Gary Road are already identified as high-density activity centers. I think we do expect increased traffic on Hunt Avenue with our growth and with the New Home Depot development. But what is so puzzling to us is why aggravate? Why heighten this traffic situation along Hunt and Gary with high-density housing, which will involve school-aged children making their way to school, high school students driving to nearby high schools? Is this really the prime location in San Tan Valley for high-density housing? Is availability equivalent to desirability? So, in conclusion, if you're leaning toward disapproval, thank you. If you're leaning toward approval, I would ask you to think about the way you're thinking in light of the comments here today and my comments of a finalized sale, compatibility, and congestion and safety for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Good afternoon. It was morning when I got here. Chairman McClure and Penal County Board of Supervisors, I'm dropping off correspondence from the San Tan Valley Advisory Council, but I'm not here representing the council. But we accumulated a bunch of probably the same complaints that you guys have received and we compiled those as a voice to the people in the community. But I'm here as a resident of Johnson Ranch. I've lived here since 2009, take a lot of pride in the beautiful community of San Tan Valley, which I like to call the land of the golden sunset. I don't visit this area, I live here and I shop in the Walmart on the Hunt Highway corridor probably three times a week. If I want to go get coffee, it's a little more often. The San Tan Valley Special Area Plan is kind of outdated. The board of supervisors recently took into consideration some recommendations from a different study, which kind of leads to that statement that the special area plan is kind of outdated. I would like to make a suggestion. If a rezoning request meets with significant opposition, if the law doesn't require an impact study, it should be part of the county's due diligence to do an impact study to ensure that the health, welfare and safety of the current residents are not compromised. The county should retain the vendor to avoid any accusations of collusion instead of the developer doing it. And the impact study should include a recommendation for the use of that parcel based on their findings. I'm requesting that the board of supervisors defer voting until an impact study has been completed. We really don't want to remain a CDP and we don't want to become a guinea pig. Multi-residential housing belongs close to jobs. Don't bring more people here to take the job opportunities from the people that already live here. If the vacant land is filled by residential homes, where will the commercial and retail opportunities be? So, in closing, I'm just asking you to consider doing an impact study before you take a vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One more, Christine Trask. She is the one we've been looking for, by the way.
My name is Christine Trask and I live in Solera and I've had a house there for 14 years. And when I moved in between 3:00 and 6:00, it was kind of a parking lot I could see onto Hunt Highway. And I was told, though, the highway is being improved. Well, it was improved, but we've run out of room to add any more lanes in front of Solera there. And also, putting in traffic lights will not improve the turning because between 3:00 and 7:00, I can't speak about mornings because I'm not a morning person, but from 3:00 to 7:00, if you're coming back from Queen Creek, you have to wait at most of the lights to turn onto Hunt Highway. If you don't have a light, you might as well forget it, pull off to the side of the road and read a book or something. Because you can't get out onto Hunt Highway, it's backed up. If you're at Gary and Hunt, I've had to sit there through at least two to three lights to turn onto Hunt because the traffic's backed up so far and they have two turn lanes even, and it doesn't help. And the other items have been addressed by other residents of San Tan Valley. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that wish to address the board on this item?
Yes, my name is Debra White and I live at 29204 West Bryce Trail. And I'm actually off of Gary and Judd. And I have been in San Tan Valley since 2008. I have seen us grow enormously. And I live on horse property and I appreciate all of the houses that have come into our area. But what I have seen is that we have an enormous gap in retail. We don't have enough sit-down restaurants, we don't have enough places for the young people that we have coming into our community to work. I appreciate the fact that we have people that need to rent. But unfortunately, we have such a congestion already, and others have touched on this. Hunt Highway has such congestion that we have traffic fatalities almost on a weekly basis. Do we really want to have the additional traffic that's going to be coming in? We have problems coming down Gary Road with the high school that's already on Gary. The Walmart, we have issues and accidents on that that's already been addressed and talked about, that you've talked about needing to get that traffic light. Think about the additional traffic that's going to be coming with having the community there pouring additional people, having that exit onto. there pouring additional people, having that exit onto Gary. So I respectfully would ask you to think about not approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others that wish to address the board on this item? One more, sir.
I'm Michael Clark. I live in Solera, 31961 North Larkspur Drive. I've been to several of these meetings. I'm amazed at the number of people that are showing up, particularly those in black shirts. And the thing I can't understand is why a planning and zoning department and engineering department are not aware of what it seems to be going on in that part of Santan Valley. It's easy for developers to come up with statistics that might sound impressive. But when you actually live in that area, you realize it's not quite true. You want to see the traffic lights at Hunt Highway and Gary Road. You want to see them further up Hunt Highway and Bella Vista and also going into Queen Creek. That is one hell of a busy corridor, and you're trying to put more traffic on there without doing anything meaningful to ease the burden on that section of road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. I was going to ask if there were more people that wanted to comment, but I'm just going to guess that would be you. Please come on down.
I'm Penelope Phelan, and I live in Solera, Johnson Ranch, and I have been in the valley since 2004. So no, I'm not a native, but I certainly have seen many changes. I kind of feel like we are a stepchild as Santan Valley, even though we could be considered one of the biggest cities in Arizona, should we be incorporated. But I also was here when we were denied even the chance to vote on yes or no because of an archaic little law that a city within five miles could deny a petition to do so. So I wonder if any of you actually have experienced the traffic problems that we have tried to express. I also am not against growth, multi-density housing, or changes in age levels, because obviously I'm in a retired community. But I would like you to consider our quality of life, too, please. I feel like we do contribute a lot to Pinal County. I appreciate living here in this beautiful state, and I appreciate the fact you sit here and listen to all of us. But I would politely ask that you deny this. It sounds like a lovely project, but I do not feel that parcel of land is the right space for it. If we're looking for transition, at least Queen Creek plans parks and things, but I see nothing like that plan for Santan Valley. Why not a park? We just don't need more traffic and problems at the moment for any of us in any generation. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like one more would like to address the board. If we keep going, we'll have everybody in the room.
That was our plan. Chairman and Supervisors, first of all, thank you for listening to us. I think it's really important that you're doing this. My name is Len Mata. I live in Solera, 178 West Lateral Circle. I'm not going to repeat everything that has been said. Obviously, we have transportation issues. We have a very water issue that I am very concerned about. As you know, in 2023, Colorado or Arizona, I should say, is going to lose 21% of the water that is annually allocated to Arizona, which is a very important thing to me and to this community. The Constitution of the United States states, "We, the people of the United States." Well, here are the people. We come before you to know that we oppose this development. We know it's legal, but at the same time, there comes a moral responsibility and moral obligation. And I hope that you would search your moral values and vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll do a last call. Any others that care to address the board on this item? I'll give them a chance down the hall there just a second. Okay, seeing and hearing none for any other comments. I would, let's see, is this going to be a roll call?
Actually...
Oh, you want to comment?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to weigh in on some of this. I am wearing a black sweater.
I see that.
But that doesn't necessarily mean I'm against the, doesn't necessarily mean that I'm against it, but I am wearing a black sweater, so. And thank goodness for, thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the time. Can we pull up part of the presentation? Because I want to make something very clear here. Go back to, can you show the area, the overall area, particularly the area that was farmed and part of the area where they're talking about? Because I want to give a little bit of some history here pertaining to Mike Goodman. I'm a native of Arizona and born and raised here. And this used to be the area that we would come and dove hunt when I was a kid.
Remember, just trying to figure out which presentation, staff's presentation?
I want the map, the overall map of where their location is, but it also has the farmland. It even has parts of where the Home Depot is going to be or where it's actually at.
So it's his?
So just to give everybody a perspective on all of this, that one. No, go back, right there. Can you, okay. So you've got existing and then proposed. Okay. This piece of property that is in question right here was actually part of a piece of property in 2009 that I farmed. Now, I couldn't farm that corner right there, although I was required by the state to make that part of my lease agreement. My property that I was leasing from the state of Arizona wrapped around and came across the street, and you see that little patch of, and that's probably where I farmed. And you look at it now, and the guy's a much better farmer than I ever was. But if you look at that area, it stretches all the way over to Gansel, 1,000 acres there. I farmed that area. In times whenever I'd get down along where Skyline Road is supposed to be and where it's supposed to go all the way through, it hasn't happened yet. Part of the problem is because of the state land. Farming in that area and, now, my wife, and this will probably take the air out of the area, but I've got 12 kids between my wife and I. 12 kids, and the majority of them live right here within the Santan Valley area. That's where most of them live. So when I got into this in 2016, it was because I could see a lot of the deficiencies that we have overall. That was a big reason when I got into this. The Home Depot that was supposed to be there, we literally had to invite them to go on a tour with us to even look at and consider the amount of growth that's already here and where it's expanding to. To the point that was made, $1.3 billion of retail sales goes out of this area. When you look at the traffic counts, it's currently, that's being overtaxed on our roads right now, it's because of people that are leaving this area to go to work or go shop and queequee. That's what's going on. We're losing a lot of that stuff to other areas. And the part that is disheartening to me as a member of this board, and especially since as much time and effort I have devoted since I've been in this position and listening to the people as a whole, to really improve the quality of life here, and that the, if I vote a certain way, then I'm not an integrable person. That, that, that's what, that's kind of the, anyway, but back to, back to what I'm getting at. You look at a lot, much of this area, I've got kids that sold their house, for instance, two of them that sold their home, and they had no place to go. Those homes, they were under contract to have them built within a year, and it's right there at the Promenade where they're building, and they had no place to go. And they're living in a mobile home, I mean, not a mobile home, but a, an RV while their house is being built. So there's no rental places out here for them at all. We don't have these apartments in this area. We have a shortage of it. That's what this study did, was it showed the need of apartments. Now, we are in the process of multiple roads that are being developed and planned and being built as we speak to address many of the traffic issues. Just so you know, we just did another traffic analysis. And that, there is so much building and construction that's already been approved to the southeast of us that unless we address the other issues of retail and employment centers, we're still going to have the traffic going on these roads. And so these issues have to be addressed. This one project is not going to change that. That was, came evident with that very study that was made, was even our existing commercial properties that we have were still short majorly. So there's still other areas that have to be developed. Now, I'm telling you that the county is ahead of looking, as much as we can be, trying to make improvements. The discussion about parks, there was somebody that made a comment about parks here. The fact of the matter is, the county is in processes of working with our Parks Department to increase that area, this area, Santan Valley that we're talking about, as far as the possibility of building parks. Now, with that being said, I look at the unity that's out here right now, and thank goodness that we've got some unified people. We're a county trying to keep up with something that we're not even able, I mean, Supervisor Miller just sits there and says, "This area needs to be incorporated." Multiple times he's made that comment. That's where the unity, do you realize that out of all five of us here, only one actually lives in that area? So part of the decision that's going to be made here is for other supervisors that don't even live in the area at all. It's going to be me, and I'll probably be the only one to vote a certain way. But nonetheless, this area itself needs to look at this as an overall, you've unified, you've become one. Somebody talked about community. That needs to be carried on even into the future now. This needs to be taken from this meeting and looked at every other thing that's going on and moving forward. And so I just want to say, but that area right there, it's not like this has been willy-nilly or anything like this. That piece of property is zoned a certain zone right now.
I understand your point.
No, 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 no. You've had your opportunity to, to respond, and I'm just, and so I'm just, I got the floor now. And so with that being said, that's, at this point, that's what I've got to say about this, is that I think there's, there's a need for this project, these type of projects in this area. There's a need for this. You know, how many in this room, and I'm not expecting you to answer, but when I first got married, I had to go move into an apartment. I had to move into an apartment. That's how my wife and I started our family. And it wasn't until I was about 35 before I could actually buy my first home. And so, and I would venture to say that the majority of you in this audience started the same exact way. The question was brought about where I live. I live on four acres, okay? Horse property. But guess what's in front of me, or directly to the south of me? ALA High School and two apartment complexes that are, one's being built and already done, and another one that's proposed and going to be built. So I have a lot of the things that you're talking about. Now, you can, we can embrace change or we can fight it. The change is coming. These properties have already been zoned and set up, ready to go. The issue is, on this board right here, how are we going to address these changes that are coming and that need to come? When you look at our retail leakage that we have, we have to find more locations that we're able to build if we're going to stop that retail leakage. When it comes to these types of developments, these homes that we so desperately think that we, that I feel personally that we need to address so that we can bring more of the workforce into this area, and even on the industrial side, bring more commercial into this area, we've got to take more of approach towards that. So that's my two cents for...
Okay. So at this point, if there's no one else that cares to...
Have a nickel?
You can have a nickel, just, sure. Go ahead, Mr. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you. After, after Mr. Goodman spoke on this issue, we've had a lot of calls on it. And what I've said to everyone who's called on the Zoom call and the representatives from the company, my position is typically with the Board of Zoning. They kind of assess the issues and give us a seven to one or, and so on and so forth, unless there's something significant that pushes us off the, the recommendation, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go against their recommendation. There's been some significant things brought up, and we're going to hear the rest of the presentation, and then maybe I'll have another comment.
Okay, so at this point, thank you. We haven't even closed the public hearing yet, so I'm going to close the public hearing if there's no one else that cares to speak. I'll come back to Mr., you're just going to speak?
After you close.
Nothing, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. After you've closed it, I'll make a statement.
I'm closing the public hearing at this time.
Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, just wanted to make a statement. It was brought up earlier in regards to a supermajority. So that is correct. We've had almost 1,000 letters of protest, opposition. We took that information, put it into a spreadsheet, looked at the area, and this does trigger a supermajority, meaning that 20% of the owners of property by area and number within the zoning area who filed the protest, if we can show that, and we have in maps, then it would trigger a supermajority. For the zoning cases, not for the minor comprehensive plan amendment. So we have three cases. First one, supermajority doesn't apply to. The next two, which is a zone change, and the plan area development, those do trigger a supermajority. So I want to make that statement, just to comment on what was said earlier.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board Supervisor Miller? I'm looking right at you.
Comments?
Comments?
Maybe a question, but we'll start with comments. I've received lots of communications on this, this project. One, a couple of things that stand out, reference to apartment buildings was pretty constant in a lot of emails. It's not apartment buildings or single-family buildings, maybe some duplex, but it is a product that I've seen that's been very successful in other areas. Over the years, I've heard a lot of individuals request more rentals in the area, although for entry level or beginners, I think that this is a real high-dollar level. It's going to be difficult for young folks to probably get into this unless they got great jobs, because they just understand the finances of this, which again will tend to keep the property values up. I don't know of any development, commercial or residential, that has ever driven property values... values down. I've not seen that. And I've been, I was a builder and a developer, I've sat on city councils, I've just never seen it. If it might stabilize it, but I've never seen it go down. I've seen property values go down because of economics in society that had nothing to do with the surrounding developments, but had to do with stock market, interest rates, economic plans, but not new development, whether it's commercial or residential. I think one of the things that I heard numerous times in all these comments, one, a word that was used, cohesiveness, which I think is really interesting, because if you want to get cohesiveness, you have to have community. And if you want community, you will have to incorporate. I have said that. This is in, in very, it needs to be incorporated if that's the, the type of urban and development controls you want, the urban and development controls, because then you can have a fire department. This will have to be a subscription-type scenario, I believe, in order to get any kind of fire protection to it. And I'm pretty sure whoever is in control of this community is going to protect their property values with some type of fire protection. And the same with police, if you want more intense police. Counties are not designed to be urban keepers. The statutes just do not really give us the flexibility that you have if you are incorporated. To the Santan Valley plan that was out there, this is what they, they said to do. Now, you can tell me that that plan is outdated, very well may be, but I think it was less than a year ago. We had it before us, and we discussed about some possible modifications, but I didn't see where something like this was modified. Matter of fact, I think we encourage diversity in types of developments in housing. So I just, I don't know, I just think it's kind of gone along with what we've said. To the transportation, I wish we had more developers that would be willing to give up another, what was it, 20 or 25 feet for, for another lane of traffic? That's what we need. We need stoplights. If you're going to control this development of transportation, we need more developers to step up and do what Hancock Homes is doing here. This is, if, if you were able to develop both sides of this road, that would be a seven-lane road, with, you know, with the center one being a turn. I, it's, those are the things that we've been asking for, and we went, we got another bite at the apple, the county did, by asking them for another lane of traffic, and they, they agreed to do it. So I have, I have a hard time not supporting this because of the, one, the, the plan, and two, the request by the county to, to try and address the transportation problems. If, if, and, and Penal County is just, what, what a first, fastest-growing county in the United States? I mean, that's what I've heard from people, I don't know if that's true or not, but we are fast-growing. Whether this community is built or not built, the traffic on Hunt Highway will continue to increase. There's no stopping that. And to commercial, you know why commercial's not developing fast there? Because there's not enough traffic. I can tell you, I went down that road with, with, with communities. They just, they look at the traffic volumes, then there's a peak, or there's a, there's a threshold that hits, and then they will start building. Then Home Depot will build, then a restaurant will come, then other development will come. These, these commercial sites do not develop until there's rooftops and traffic. That is the formula that the corporates put together on those. So just understand that. And again, I, I think it fits into the Santan area plan, and I, I appreciate the willingness of Hancock to step forward and try to, to address the issues that the community has, has spoken out about. And I've never received any money from Hancock Homes, so.
Okay, so are there any other comments from the Board?
I want to echo a lot of what he says. I'm not crazy about this project. I wish everybody could have their own house on an acre. And I'm hoping that apartments don't come there. There's plenty of apartments being built in the more urban areas, but there's nothing, I mean, everything is going according to the rules we've set up with, with the, with the planning department. And being from a city council, I know that, yeah, restaurants won't come unless, unless there's enough rooftops. And you look at what they have to pay, it's going to, you know, it's, it's really tough to make a profit off a commercial. And I do want to see the Santan Valley Steering Committee work on and, and reserve more of a downtown community area, so that it's not nothing but homes. It, it is going to have to incorporate, and they are going to need a downtown and a, an area for parks and concerts and things like that. So I, I sure hope that that, that doesn't get overlooked any further.
Any other comments from the Board? Seeing and hearing none, I would ask for motion on item six. These will all be voted on separately.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number six as presented, with no stipulations.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is that an aye opposed, or an aye?
Nay.
Oh, a nay, okay, there we go. Nay. That's three to two, is that correct? Is that what you heard? Ms. Kennedy?
If we can do a roll call, Chairman?
Yes.
Because that is not what I heard.
Okay.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Aye.
Chairman McClure?
Nay.
That motion fails, three to two. I'm sorry, that motion passes.
I say, I think the math is backwards on that, okay. Okay, item number seven. We've already gone through this item, so I'm going to ask for motion on item seven.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number seven as presented with one stipulation.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. This does call for a roll call vote?
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Aye.
Chairman McClure?
Nay.
That motion pass, that motion does not, does not pass, it does not have the four supermajority votes.
All right, item number eight. Ask for motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number eight as presented with 15 stipulations.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. This does call for a roll call vote. Ms. Kennedy?
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Supervisor Goodman?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Aye.
Chairman McClure?
Nay.
That motion fails, it does not meet the four supermajority votes.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's come back to item number five. That would be the purchasing division report.
I'm sure.
Good afternoon, Ms. Peterson, how are you today?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, I'm wonderful.
Good. All right, well, let's get on with it then.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Board. I'm T.R. Peterson, your Purchasing Manager for Penile County, and this is your purchasing report for November 2nd, 2022. First, the Board has requested to approve the following contract awards. IFB 231623 for demolition of the domes. We recommend Hock LLC be awarded a contract in the bid amount of $128,676. This contract will be used by the Community Development Department. RFP 220726 for public health clinic services. We recommend contracts be awarded to Tanique Vaughn of Nurses Staffing LLC, Sidney L. Sheldon, MSN WHNP. The initial one-term, one-year term of the contract begins November 2nd, 2022, to run concurrent with the current contract term, which expires August 31st, 2023, and this contract will be used by the Public Health Department. Next, the Board has requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 180223 for inmate commissary and banking services. We recommend approval of amendment number four to exercise the optional extension period from October 13th, 2022 through October 12th, 2023, with Airmark Correctional Services, LLC. This contract is used by the Sheriff's Department. RFP 202025 for workforce development data analyst. We recommend approval of amendment number three to exercise the optional extension period from September 29th, 2022 through September 28th, 2023, with the Partnership for Workforce Innovation. This contract is used by the Economic Development Department. IFB 221126 for landfill disposal services. We recommend approval of amendment number one to exercise the optional extension period from September 29th, 2022 through September 28th, 2023, with Waste Management of Arizona, and this contract is used countywide. RFP 202725 for court-ordered evaluation services. We recommend approval of amendment number two to exercise the optional extension period beginning December 16th, 2022, with Community Bridges, Inc. and Sonora Behavioral Health. This contract is used by the Public Fiduciary's Office. And finally, the Board is hereby notified of the following corporate purchase made, PO number 248484 with FX Tactical, LLC, in the amount of $144,000 for ballistic vests used by the Sheriff's Department. That concludes your purchasing and division report for November 2nd, 2022.
Sorry about that, thank you. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing, hearing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated November 2nd, 2022.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Peterson, have a great day. We now come to item number nine, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be, will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a Board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. This is from, let's see, what do we have, items A through AB. AB has been pulled by county education, school boards, Jill Broussard, anyway, what, I can't think of your title. Oh, yeah, that lady, yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's been pulled by Superintendent Jill Broussard. So are there any other items that anyone on the Board cares to pull?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kavanaugh?
K and Q.
K and Q. Are there other items anyone from the Board wishes to pull? Hearing none, are there any from the audience that care to pull an item? All right, so we have items A through AA minus K and Q. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve items A through...
AA.
Is it AA?
AA.
I have AB.
Well, AB goes all the way down, but it's already been pulled.
Oh, sorry, so A through AA, with the exception of K, Q, and R.
Oh, you added R?
I thought that was, no.
She's AB, that's where that goes.
Yeah, I shouldn't make the motion. At least not my motion day.
It's been a long day.
So, with the exception of K and Q.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you. We'll move to item K first. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
So this item, Mr. Chairman, is a discussion of a subreciprate grant between a newly Penile County and the Board of Supervisors in the amount of $393,407 in response to a letter of interest. And my question is, what portion, if you know, good morning, or good afternoon, what portion of these funds go to rent and what portion go to admin fees? Do you know?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, Angie Woods, the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. I, I don't have the answer of which portion is admin fees versus, you know, rental. I do know that this is providing rental, tenant-based rental assistance for county residents. I typically, in, in any grant, the, the administration fees is no more than 10%, but I don't have that answer for you. Unfortunately, the grants manager was unable to, to make this portion at the meeting.
Okay, and then, well, really my question was for the grants manager, so I have no, no further questions.
All right, so are there any other questions from the Board on item K? Seeing, hearing none, may I get a motion, please, on item K?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve item K as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much. Item Q, Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, and this, again, the question is really directed toward the, the Grants Department, Mr. Chairman, so I don't know if you can answer, but I'll ask if you know the, the specific needs related to this grant, and does this feed in? We have, we have millions in grants sitting there for housing that are unspent. Does this, is this add to that pile, or is this a different pile?
So essentially, these, these monies have already been spent.
Okay.
And we've already engaged with community partners for most of this spending. There's a match to this grant, and, and really, this item is asking to cut out about $40,000, 50% Penile County, 50% grant dollars, so total of $40,000. $20,000 of that being Penile County. The, the remaining part of that match is in kind, is coming from community partners that we have already engaged in. They're already doing this business. This item is literally to approve the $20,000 match.
Okay, and do you, can you explain for the public's benefit, really quick, what the landlord incentive program does?
It's in order to get landlords to rent to our, our clients, or the clients of those that we're partnering with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions on item Q from the Board? Seeing, hearing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item Q as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion Q passes, thank you, or item Q passes, thank you. We now come to item AB. Ms. Broussard, county school superintendent, that's who you are.
That's who I am. Good day, gentlemen, it's been a long morning, hasn't it? Feels like we're still in mourning, but, but that may, never mind, it's 1:45, so. I just wanted to come today, I did provide some history on the aggregate expenditure limit, and we're asking, we, actually, the, the districts within the county are asking for your support in a, in a letter of support regarding the aggregate expenditure limit, and I'm wondering if you would like me to provide some of that history around... And I'm wondering if you would like me to provide some of that history around it for public information.
Public knowledge. Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. So the aggregate expenditure limit was first set and passed in 1980. We call that the AEL. The AEL created spending limitations on public schools throughout the state of Arizona. So as a whole, this is how much we can spend on public school. So, but that does not include charter schools. They do not have an expenditure limit. The spending cap can be overridden by a two-thirds majority vote of the House and Senate. We do not hit that cap every year. And we've only had the need to pass it in 2000, I'm sorry, override it in 2002, 2008, and 2022. The AEL includes a majority of the funding for the districts that include the maintenance and operations, district additional assistance, desegregation funds, classroom site funds, results-based funding, school facilities, and transportation funds. I do think that it's important to note that in 2000, the voters passed the Invest in K-12 Education Prop 301. And in 2002, the voters made 301 exempt from that aggregate expenditure limit. So those dollars did not include into the calculations. In 2018, legislators extended that Prop 303 to allow the AEL exemptions until 2020. So when we hit the limit last year in 2022, it was now, because it's legislatively passed, those dollars are now in the AEL limits. Does that make sense? So these dollars that were never included in the original calculation by voters, once it became a legislatively passed issue, now those dollars are included in that calculation. So it automatically bumps up the amount in that calculation. So the creation of the AEL, it preceded some pretty important factors in education. We're looking at 1980s here, so we don't have the charter schools, of course, but we don't have open enrollment, we don't have the drastic rise in special education, we don't have ELL in charter schools. And those have all become huge factors in funding, not to mention, there's a huge influx recently, of course, of the rescue and relief dollars for COVID. So that's what triggered the AEL last year in 2022. So last year, the AEL was triggered by a $1.15 billion overage. This year, it is $1.3 billion overage. And that left our public schools in a pretty precarious position of having to cut... Well, this year, let's just talk this year. That will leave them in a precarious position of having to cut 17.51% of their dollars in the last two months of school, the last two months of our spending. So we've already budgeted for our full budget, everything that the legislators and the voters and federal grants, everything that has already been approved for us to have within our budget. And now, once we trigger that AEL, we're unable to spend those dollars, so now we have to cut that. So to kind of give you a picture, last year, that would have meant $54.5 million for the Chandler District. To have to cut that in the last two or three months of your budget would be tough without closing the doors, right? So I love to think that this, of course, the legislators will do an override and pass this aggregate expenditure limit. I am an eternal optimist, but I have been shot down quite a lot recently for my optimism in the fact that I don't think a legislator, the legislators will want to be responsible for having to close schools two months early because we can't pay the bills. But there's always that danger and that risk. So in preparation for that, we have come up with this letter of support just to show solidarity that you would like for us to be able to spend the money we've already been allocated as public schools in general, as a whole. There's really only a couple of ways to solve this in the future that they've come up with or that we have discussed. And the first is just, there's no strategy. We'll just keep having to do this year after year, come and ask for support to override that AEL amount. We could do a revision of the calculation to include some of the things like inflation and special ed funds. Or we could just do away with the AEL limitation altogether, which I personally don't see the voters responding well to, but that's my opinion, and I probably shouldn't have shared it. I just feel like voters tend to like us to have a limit on spending at some point. So I think that it just comes down to, there's this distrust of spending in the K-12 education world, and then the K-12 education world has this distrust of the government. And their desire to fully fund, whatever that number is, fully fund public education. So I think that that's probably the details that you need, but I'm happy to answer questions.
So what you're looking for is a letter from us to support essentially a continuing budget resolution?
Yep. If you could override the AEL for this year and allow us to spend the funds that have already been allocated to K-12 public education schools.
And our letter is to the Legislature. Is that correct?
Yep. It was going to be to the Governor, asking for a special session, but I think it's too late in the season for that.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board? Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Bressard. Any of your organizations that you belong to, you know, for school superintendents in Arizona, are you proposing some legislative action maybe this year that might help correct this? And if so, can you kind of share just even a brief understanding of what you're looking at?
Yeah. So those three possibilities that I kind of mentioned very quickly to rectify, if you would, or address the situation, are the ones that have been discussed so far. I really think that it's just going to come down to, and they'll be proposing, because it's a very complicated issue.
Sure.
Just proposing new calculations to include the new dollars that have been, you know, dedicated to education since 1980. I mean, when we look at the technology advances, the cost in gas, you know, just all of these, and not to mention inflation, of course, our dollars are going to increase to education, but our limits have not increased. So that's the issue. So if we can maybe just do, you know, a revamp of the calculations, then, and I believe that's what they're looking at for writing legislation, and there are a couple of groups working together to do that.
Sounds like a similar method that we use for transportation here in Arizona. We just said something many, many years ago and decided to write it.
Yeah.
Well, I think certainly some type of an index to just even inflation would be helpful. So good luck on that, and if I can help in that way, I'll be glad to.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the Board? I don't even see a comment. Supervisor Goodman, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, just checking. Okay, just checking. All right. Then I'd ask for a motion on this item, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Item AB as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Bressard. Next, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting and convene the Pinellas County Flood Control District Board of Directors' meeting, just like that. And who is up here? Chris Wannamaker, are you around? I don't see him, but we'll... What? We'll take the substitute. Just keep it moving.
Chair Supervisors, Joshua Plum, Pinellas County Flood Control District.
Actually, you know what? There's no... I'm sorry. You know what? I'm just like, it's been a long day.
I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, yeah. Just don't have a seat. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm not really paying attention. This is one whole item, consent items. All items, the one, indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a Board Member, County Manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Are there any, anything that the Board would care to pull here?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to...
Go ahead.
To approve Item A of the consent agenda as presented.
Excellent choice. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Okay. Sorry for the confusion, but, you know, it's lack of food or something like that.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Can I get who seconded that motion?
This guy right here.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Goodman.
And you got the whole "I" thing? All five of us? We're good. Okay. I'm going to adjourn the Flood Control District Board of Directors' meeting and reconvene the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. This will start. Item Number 11. Is everybody good here? Do you need a recess? Nope, we're all good. Okay. Items 11 through 14 will be discussed together, and they will be voted on separately. We have Sangita Doker. How are you today?
Fine, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members. My name is Sangita Doker. I am the case coordinator for the Major Comprehensive Plan Amendments for 2022. And we are at the last public hearing for this Major Comprehensive Plan Amendments for this year. So just to give you an overview of the schedule that has happened, and September 1st, we had the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. September 15th was the PNZ Commission hearing, and this is the last one, which is the Board of Supervisors' hearing. This year, we had five cases that were submitted. The first two were solar projects that were submitted, and the next three were county-initiated items. The first one was withdrawn by the applicant prior to the PNZ hearing. The second one is the Cameron Solar Project, which I would be presenting. We have the third one, which is Creation of Land Use Classifications. This is specially for the military installations that are existing. The fourth one is Creating Special Districts' Land Use Classification for Arizona State Lands. And the last one was regarding wind energy, which was, again, withdrawn by the county. To begin with, we are going to begin with this Item Number Two. This is the Cameron Solar Project. Proposal is Aurora Solar LLC, a subsidiary of Avangrid Renewables LLC, proposing a Major Comprehensive Plan Amendment, proposal to redesignate 888 acres from moderate-low-density residential and recreation conservation zone to green energy production and recreation and conservation. The total acreage is 888 acres. Location is half a mile north of city of Coolidge. Owner is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We have the applicant, Kristen Golan, from Aurora Solar LLC, and she's here present today. This is the location map showing the location where this project proposal has been submitted by the applicant. One can see that it is northern portion of Coolidge, south of Florence, in the incorporated area of Pinellas County, central Pinellas County. This is the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation. One can see that there are two land use classifications currently present. It is MLDR, Recreation and Conservation. MLDR is 1 to 3.5 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed land use designation for both is green energy production and recreation conservation. This is the vicinity map showing the project boundary in red with immediate surroundings to this project area being general rural, very low-density residential. One can also see that there are CR3 on the north of this project portion, more than half of that. South immediate is green, sorry, general rural, and then it's state land. However, one can see that it's surrounded by, further north, by the town of Florence. South further is town of Coolidge, and we have the Hila River Indian Community to the further west. This is the aerial map showing the area and the project boundary, once again, in the dotted showing totally undeveloped at this point in time. And one can see the southern portion being the Hila River, which is abutting to the south of this project. And also seeing the north, Florence, and the southern portion being the town of Coolidge. Zoning, further zooming down, showing the CR3 portion to the north of this, and immediate surroundings for this being private land and GR zoning. Again, zoomed down, showing the state land, a portion showing state land to the south, Coolidge to the further south, and Florence to the further north. The only portion that is, one can see is planted, is in the Florence area to the northeast portion, and some portion on the northwest. This is the map showing the existing infrastructure and, from a perspective for a solar project, showing the project boundary in yellow and red, in black. The red line is showing basically the 115 KV transmission lines. One can see that this project area kind of is sandwiched between, I would say, the transmission lines to the north and south. Eastern portion is the 230 KV line shown in green and blue. You can also see the substations to the south, shown in black circles, which is going to be utilized if this moves forward by the Cameron Solar to be tapped into. This is the portion showing the Hila River flood zone and the portion showing the reservation for open space that would be allocated in moving forward. I will show you what it means. So current comprehensive plan, as described earlier, was the moderate-low-density and recreation and conservation zone. So the recreation and conservation zone is to the south of the project area, and which is the portion of the Hila River. And to further show this in detail, the open space lines as of now do not follow the Hila River flood plain. What I mean when I say that is that the dotted line that is shown in black and the green line that is showing at the south portion, the green edge is the incorrect edge. The black dotted line is the correct edge, and that is as per the flood maps that we have with the flood division. So redesignation of this open space is trying to ensure that we follow these lines that are actually existing, and they follow the GIS maps for the Flood Control District. So what it means in terms of land use designation is the portion in the yellow, which is a part of the oval area, that is going to be re-designated from MLDR to open space. And a portion in this oval area, which is the green portion, is going to be re-designated to moderate, to the green energy production. So to understand this, this is the next map, which can further clear that part. The light rain portion, which is... Can I show this pointer working? Oh, sorry. So this is the portion which is going to be from MLDR to open space, which will follow our flood maps and the line, which also has the 100-year flood plain. And this is the portion which is... And this is the portion which is going to be moderate low-density residential, which is going to be re-designated as green energy production. So that would also correct the current maps for our Hila River floodmaps and also the 100-year floodplain. So to give a project overview, the current conditions is active and fallow agricultural area, flat topography. There are some areas which have been used, so it's disturbed land. Location of the Hila River and the 100-year floodplain, southeast of the project of the area. Proximity to existing electrical and transmission infrastructure, substations, APS, SRP, and Valley Farm substations. The proposal includes standard solar generation project for 100 megawatt of battery storage that includes the PV modules, single access tracking system, battery storage systems, the operation and maintenance buildings and associated infrastructure. Timing of development is expected, commercial operation by 2025. The project area located is in the vicinity of wildlife habitat connectivity feature. The applicant is very well aware of that, and what does it imply for land use planning? Applicant to ensure conserving open space as directed by Open Space and Trails Master Plan, drainage design manual, and avoiding minimizing impacts to riparian habitats. Recreation and conservation land use designation to follow the 100-year floodplain line edge of the Hila River as per the Penal County flood map, as shown earlier. Additional 100-feet buffer after the floodplain has to be maintained. Coordination with state historic preservation U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, AZ Game and Fish Department would be required to ensure all wildlife are preserved, including mobility, permeability is maintained and enhanced. Habitats that were documented in the vicinity were Sonoran Desert Tortoises and the Western Burrowing Owl. Some items in the urban context that were looked into from the land use perspective, the project area is currently surrounded by industrial-scale operations. There are cement aggregates and concrete facilities and plants, manufacturing, that surround this project area. Multiple establishments that have been shared are the Soloterra Materials, Hanson Florence Plant, Southwest Rock Coolidge, Cal Portland Plant, Semex Coolidge Concrete Plants. These are all surrounding and has been shown on the map with those red dots. There are no comments we received from the town of Florence or any other agencies. No residential development immediately abutting the project site. There's sparse residential residences around, except for the northeast portion, which is platted in the town of Florence. We received no comments from them. Site is suitable for uses similar to abutting uses, which is industrial and commercial Public responses, agencies, we received no response. In written, we received two property owners who shared their letters in opposition, and we received two more emails after we shared those documents with you, and I think one of the applicant already talked about that in the morning before we began this whole thing. Citizens Advisory Committee response, recommended approval with 8 to 2. Planning and zoning, recommended approval with 5 to 3. I'm open for any questions. We also have the applicant who would like to present their presentations. So I'm-
Okay, are there any questions from the board for Ms. Doker?
Applicant.
No, I know you guys, but I'm here. Okay, let's have the applicant come out, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman McClure and Board of Supervisors. My name is Tyler Hoffberg. I work for Avangrid Renewables out of Portland, Oregon. Let me get here. Are you controlling the presentation room? Okay, thank you. Here today with me besides myself, we have Kristen Golan, who is the official applicant on record with Avangrid Renewables, with our permitting and environmental team. We also have Marcy Patrick with our permitting team. A couple other people involved that are not here today is Dave Glenn with our transmission team, as well as Mark Stacy, who's the Director of Business Development for our Rocky Mountain and Southwest regions. A little bit about our company. We're the third-largest renewable energy owner-operator in the United States. We currently have over 8 gigawatts of wind and solar in 22 states. Included in that is the first wind farm, two wind farms in Arizona, in Navajo County, El Dry Lake 1 and 2, as well as the Copper Crossing Solar Project here in Penal County that was later sold to SRP. We're a stable owner-operator. We're not a fly-by-night developer that comes in and develops these things and then just leaves town. You know, we, we develop these projects with the intent to, to own and operate them for the life of the project and be good stewards in the county. Our company, as it says there on the slide, you know, we're a large company, $38 billion in assets in the United States and operating in over 24 states. We've got a lot of solar projects under construction around the country right now, as well as several wind projects. Oops, sorry about that. Make sure I'm right. This thing's a little slow to respond. All right, I think I'm on the right page. As far as the details here, so as Sangita had mentioned, we're looking at roughly 885 acres of land that is partially, partially farmed now, some of it sits fallow. Currently zoned or in the plan for moderate low-density residential with the proposal to change to green energy. The owner of the property is Farmland Reserve, which is a LLC of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We're planning 100 megawatt, up to 100 megawatt solar facility with an optional battery storage component, which is a requirement of APS and SRP for all new solar generation that they're looking to procure in Arizona. We have multiple off, options for offtake, including SRP to our west, APS to our west, also to our south, and a Coolidge substation to our southwest, about a mile and a half away, which is a Western Area Power Administration substation. In addition to the solar, we'll have some roads that we will build to access the site. We'll have an operations and maintenance building, which is, in a conceptual design, is located off of Addaway Road, as well as a collector's substation, which we would build to collect the power and then deliver it to the grid. Anticipated schedule, as shown here, wrapping up MCPA this year, moving to the pad and zoning change approval in 2023, followed by a permit construction, or construction permits in '24, and after receiving those, we plan to move to construction in '24 and '25, finishing and going operational at the end of '25. We held a neighborhood meeting just north of the project back in the spring. We had fairly good turnout with 13 individuals, and asked a lot of great questions. No huge, huge issues or concerns from the public. I think more than anything, a lot of them had spoken about not wanting to see residential there, and that, not that they were necessarily in favor of the project, but they were more against residential than they were against a use of this type. We followed up with some of them afterwards on answering any additional questions they may have, and have had a few people reach out by email since then. Project location, as we discussed, is south of Palmer Road, west of Addaway Road, and east of Christiansen Road, just north of the Hila River. Sorry, there we go. All right, let's see if we missed one here. Project location advantages. As Sangita had mentioned, one of the reasons we like this location is just based on the existing uses around, around the site, being primarily industrial in nature. We have three or four aggregate facilities to our west, south, and east, as well as a dairy to the north. The site is large and flat, which means that we have a minimal amount of grading required, so less disturbance. And we're, we're going to avoid the floodplain and flood hazard areas, as, as mentioned by Sangita, and staying out of that. Sorry, this thing's not really working for me. I took a, we went around, took a few pictures, just to give you guys a little bit more perspective of, of the existing land uses in the area that we'll just walk through here. On the first page, you can see the different vantage points that we took pictures from, and we'll walk through each of those, just to help paint a picture of, of the project site. The first is along Addaway Road, looking towards a Semex facility. This picture was taken just south of our site, along Addaway, looking southwest. Can we get back to that overview page, please? Okay, thank you. Yep, right there. Could you advance for me, since this isn't working? We can go to the next slide, please. Sorry, next slide, one more. Second is from Palmer Road, just north of our proposed project area, looking north towards the dairy facility that is existing. Next page, please. Third vantage point is along Quail Run Road. This, this bisects our project north-south, and this is looking south towards the Hanson Aggregate Facility. This road currently has very heavy truck traffic coming in and out of there, carrying aggregate. Again, off of Addaway Road, up at the corner of Addaway and Palmer, looking to the southeast. There is a small piece of agricultural land there, and to the south, you can see the large berm of dirt that's been built up around the existing aggregate facility there. Next, please. And then lastly, we have, looking from Christiansen Road to the east towards the project, another open pit aggregate quarry facility on that side. Next. Sorry, one more. This was taken from the northwest corner, looking southwest. Why we like the project and why we like the area, I've already talked about the area a little bit, but why we're, why we're looking in this area for solar development is really in a response to both SRP and APS's need for renewable energy in Arizona in the coming years. APS is recently committed to 65% clean energy by 2030, and I believe that goes up even higher. I have another slide coming up in the, by 2035. And our hope is that Cameron Solar Project will help APS meet that commitment. The existing utility infrastructure in the area is also a huge advantage. Our hope would be to, to connect very close to the grid, very close to the site itself, without a need for, for long interconnection lines to get back to other potential offtake locations. And of course, you know, we're, we're close to, relatively close to the primary load center, being Phoenix for Arizona and the APS and SRP systems. Again, we've done environmental surveys here, wetland surveys, and the site itself is absent of any sensitive resources. Sangita mentioned some in proximity, but for the most part, none of those were, were found on site. Next, please. Here's a slide, just talking a little bit about APS and their commitment to clean energy. By 2050, they plan to be 100% clean, and APS's definition of clean is non-combustion combustible fuels, so I think nuclear with Palo Verde Plant plays a role in that, being 65% clean, and then the other 45% coming from solar and wind and other renewable generation. And, and just by '25, APS is looking for another 500 megawatts of renewables. Next, please. SRP is a lot in the same in what their goals are. You can see on the left the current mix of fuels that, or energy sources that SRP is using, and over time, by 2035, you can see how much the renewables is eating up on that, taking up of the pie in reduction of gas and coal. And over on the right, you can see kind of the mix that they're looking for by 2035, primarily solar, a little bit of, or some geothermal with a little bit of biomass and So the, the other big question here is why, why we're proposing in this area, green energy versus residential? And aside from the existing industrial uses surrounding the property, some other benefits that we see, you know, for the county itself is, is, this project will require really no additional ancillary facilities, minimal additional lighting, being dark sky compliant, and, and very little water usage compared to a residential, residential development of similar size. The solar, the solar, really, the only water there would be cleaning the panels once or twice a year at about a half a gallon of water per panel, which comes, that equals about less than one acre foot per year versus residential at greater than 100 acre feet per year for, for something of similar size. Minimal operational traffic during operations. You know, as was mentioned earlier today, the site would probably have 300, 300 to 400 construction jobs, so there would be a temporary increase in traffic in this area. But our operating staff would only be three or four, so over the long haul, very little additional traffic. You know, just a few other bullet points here, more pervious services versus covering it in asphalt or concrete, and also quieter for existing residences off of North Christiansen Road. Next, please. Lastly here, just a, a quick snippet of, of the tax benefits associated with the project to the county. This is, this is assuming a 25-year, sorry, 30-year project life. The way that the Arizona tax code is set up, that a lot of this gets paid upfront and, and diminishes over time, so instead of looking at, you know, just the totals, I provided the average taxes per year and the breakdown of, of where those would go within the county itself. So tremendous, tremendous tax benefit to the county with, with minimal additional impact to the county itself for the, the neighboring residences. And with that, I think, next, and I think that's it. Questions?
Are there any questions from the board? I have one from Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Almost each time a solar project is built, particularly when it includes batteries, and this is 100-megawatt battery facility, what provision is there for putting out a fire, and how are fires handled?
So fires within batter, fires are, are an electrical fire, so they are treated as any other electrical fire would be treated. I'm not a fire professional. The, the batteries themselves typically come with some sort of fire suppression system, and, and as, you know, we all know, I mean, there have been batteries here in Arizona that have caught fire in the past, and, and I think that the technology over time is changing to help address that. What we do as a developer, when we build battery storage facilities, is we make sure that there is defensible space around the batteries. You know, they typically sit on a gravel pad, and so that if it catches fire, you know, our instruction to local fire districts is to just let the fire burn and, and put nobody else in harm's way. So, you know, I, like I said, I'm not a fire professional, but, but I know that there are fire suppression systems within the batteries themselves, and we do our best as a developer to maintain a defensible space around it to not-
And do you know what kind of toxins are released in the event of a fire?
I don't. I don't.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? These items have a public hearing aspect to them, and we're going to open a public hearing for agenda items 11 through, well, it says 11 through 14, but 14 has been withdrawn. So 11 through 13. I have a few requests. I think you're good for the moment.
Thank you.
I have a few requests to speak. I have Mr. Ernie Phyllis. Yep, ma'am.
Before we go to comments from the public, if we can get staff to finish the presentation-
Oh, I thought I was done.
Is that the complete presentation? Okay. For all, all items? No, so we, yes. Okay, so we- Okay, so we need to present on all items, correct? 11 through 14?
It was my understanding we're taking these, each one of these separately, because there's separate presentations on each one, and each one also requires, you know, a separate vote in public.
So I stand corrected, so it's not all together as it's telling me here. I couldn't figure that out, but that's, thank you for making that clear. Okay, so for item 11, let's go from there. Mr. Felis, please come up. I just go by what, you know, I'm told, I don't, you know...
You have my name and address, and I don't need to...
If you could just state your name and generally where you live, that would be great.
All right. Ernie Felice, 1850 North Ridgemont Place, Casa Grande, Arizona. I represent the Felice family, I mean, the, the Felice Farms, which is parcel number 2029, 203007. It's the property directly north, at the corner of Addaway and Palmer. And I would like, I'm speaking in opposition to this, because, and it's a 30-acre area. My family has began farming this area about 140 years ago, and now it's down to, for my family, my portion of the family, it's down to the 30-acre parcel, but also the Felice Family Trust, I spoke with their, a member of their family, and they are also opposed to this. The last person that we can, we can talk about, who, my father was a World War II veteran who passed away last February at age 96, and he and I worked together to grow alfalfa, I helped him harvest the alfalfa there at that field. We had an opportunity to sell this property back in the land boom, and, but there's so many owners of it now, what we decided is it wouldn't be a life-changing, selling, selling the property wouldn't change any of our lives significantly, and at that time, my, my father was the last surviving member of our family, and we wanted to see if we could do something nice with that property. This would prevent something nice from going, from going in that area. We have the, the quarries, but that brings jobs to this area. The, as well as the dairy, brings jobs to this area. This doesn't really bring jobs to the area. And if you drive down 87, north of Coolidge, 287, west of, east of Casa Grande, Selma Highway, 11 Mile Corner Road, and look at how those solar farms look, weeds covering the setbacks, and, and separated by chain link, it's just unsightly. And this is, this is what, one of the things that we're opposed to. I don't want to be disingenuous. I, I bought a house last year in Shadow Ridge that has solar panels on it. It's worked out great for me, and it's, I think it's great for individuals, but in this, for this large urban area, I don't agree that it works. The developer is prepared to follow county guidelines with regard to mitigation and setbacks, but if county guidelines makes it look like what I've just described, those areas I've described to you, that's not enough. So, for now, to me, I think it's better off just to be in opposition of this, and, and as an area, as a person who grew up in the Florence area, you know, Florence gets the prisons, that's, that, that doesn't help land values. We get a landfill, we get rock quarries, and we're used to all of that. Why do we have to have more of this in this Florence and Coolidge area? Why do we always get these things? And in this case, this is something that's not going to be a benefit to Pinell County, it's going to be benefit, beneficial to Maricopa County. Why do we continue to have...
I'm sorry, please wrap up, because your time is up.
Yes, sir. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Debbie Neely.
Wow, it's been a long day. Chairman, Supervisors, my name is Debbie Neely, I'm from Coolidge, Arizona. I oppose this amendment before the board today. In fact, I oppose any further development of solar in Pinell County. In preparation for this meeting today, I talked to an individual at the assessor's office and asked them, can you give me an idea of how many acres in Pinell County have already been developed into solar, sit here today? That individual told me 2,500 acres, but they were certain that that was wrong, that it was much more, and that that didn't even include the number of acres that have already been improved. So let's think about that for a minute if you can. Assuming it is 2,500 acres, think about Casa Grande. You're looking now from Florence Boulevard to Cortson, Thornton to Treacle. That's four sections of land, 2,500 acres. And now we're here today to add another 888 acres in solar development. Plus, there's probably going to be, well, not probably, there will, probably will be more than 300 acres on your plate for decision coming in the near future as well. That's 1,300 more acres of solar in Pinell County. Now think about Casa Grande, you're Thornton over to the mall, you're Florence Boulevard, well on your way to the 10. There's no town there. It's all solar. These acres don't even include what the cities have done, Florence, Casa Grande, Eloy, Coolidge. As a matter of fact, the city of Coolidge has approved over 8,000 acres within its city limits to be developed into solar. Pinell County, in my opinion, is a gold mine. We all know it sits right between Phoenix and Tucson, it has rural and urban flair. The land on your plate today sits directly across the street from land that has already been platted and approved for residential homes. What developer, or resident for that matter, in their right minds, think that they will attract people to live in a home that sits right across from 800 acres of solar? I'm going to ask you, Josh White spoke this morning, he had to leave a little bit early, so he addressed this a little out of order. In his portfolio package, it's his CV, as well as the sources that back the information that he presented to you as a climatologist, I ask that you maybe research his information, because it's far more on a higher scale on how it affects the environment of what I can provide for you right now. You know, growth and attraction, we're all looking to grow, but it's based on the platform that we desire and that we, that we design for here. I wonder what the folks just north of this project at Merrill Ranch think about it. I bet they don't even know about it. I wonder what they would think with the information that Josh White could share with them, or the decisions that have been made by these supervisors in planning and zoning in the past for future solar development here.
Can you please wrap up, because your time is up?
Yes. I implore you to decline this major plan amendment of LDS and Aurora Solar. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm looking at, I think it says Courtney Ramirez? Was I close?
You nailed it. Hello, I'm Courtney Ramirez, I'm here from Florence. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on this. I am also highly opposed to any solar, any wind in our country, really. The stuff already works, and I think even more deeper than that is, and I went to the community meetings and the, the community board meeting and brought up the toxins, the poisonous toxins that cause cancer and can kill people, let alone the stuff they do to prep the dirt with other toxins to sterilize the soil to prevent the weeds that end up growing. So arsenic is the king of poisons, okay? That's stuff, I'm talking the toxins that these solar panels are made with. Cadmium telluride, copper indium, it's, has, talks about energy gamma radiation, selenide, cadmium gallium selenide, selenide, silicone tetrachloride, okay? That's colorless stuff that just fumes in the air all over the place. Hexafluorothane, lead polyvinyl fluoride. All of these are very toxic to humans, to our land, they seep in our water, and to the animals, okay? All those toxins are detrimental to even humans, and then gets in the water, and, and then we're just poisoned, it, it's a cycle. And she's right, Pinell County is the golden corridor here in, in this whole area. Two, two or three full-time jobs for these projects is crazy. We need, we need tougher jobs. I, I agree, we, we don't need any more houses for a while. We need jobs, and most importantly, our land and our people don't need to be poisoned by the toxins that are in these chemicals that seep and leach into the ground. Gentleman said, oh, let it burn. What about all the toxins that are in these panels when there is a fire? Let's just burn and poison the community, right?
Please address the board.
So, well, I'm addressing everybody, because it's important. So I think it's really important for you guys to just, you know, everybody's doing this green energy. What is green energy? Right? Like, we already have power, this stuff is polluting our land, these aren't recyclable. What is happening to all this stuff? You know, when, when, and 30 and 40 years are what these projects are, are going to last, and then be decommissioned? Meanwhile, our, our land is polluted for 30 or 40 years? Do we really want that? Do you guys want to subject the humans to that toxic poison that comes from these? Do the research. Do the research. These things are toxic. So please, don't allow any, any wind or any solar in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bagnall.
Chairman McClure, Vice Chairman Sertie, members of the board. Seven years ago, I stood before this board, two members were on this board at the time, to try to stop a solar, a nestrel grade solar facility that, to be built to the south of my property. That went ahead, and it passed, and at that time, I raised concerns about impacted views, glare, visual effects, noise, light, vibration, dust, and of course, the solar developers said, you guys have nothing to worry about, we don't have that. Then we find out later about EMI, electromagnetic interference, which can cause problems with cell phones, and your reception with those. And like most people, we don't have a landline anymore, and we've had problems with, with the electromagnetic interference, dropped calls. And still, you know, they, they say, well, no, none of this happens. Well, Orsted, which is going to, going to be building to the west of my property now, they circulated a solar project neighbor agreement to certain people, and for $1,500 a year, you sign this thing, they give you 1,500 a year, and in the agreement, they say that you, they're held harmless from adverse impacts, listing all those things I just talked about, along with electromagnetic interference. So, Orsted is supposed to be a leader in this, they're out of Denmark, the company today is out of Spain. They're, they're based out of Spain, if, from what I understand. The only thing green about green energy is the money. That's it. And the thing is, we have all this federal tax money, federal dollars, and all these things, it's all subsidized by the federal government, and then there's the argument, well, we get all these tax dollars back. Well, that's just our money again. It's being recycled. Do the right thing, put a stop to this stuff. We don't need it, and it's screwing up our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to address the board on this particular item? Seeing, hearing none, I will close the, the public hearing aspect of this item. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, this may be for Sangita, or, this all appears to be agriculture, or currently, some of it's fallowed or whatever. Do you know the, who the, is it in an irrigation district? Or is it wells? Or do you know, do you know how this was farmed? Does anybody?
San Carlos.
It's a San Carlos? Okay, which has no water. So, the, and as I understand it, the, the tax burden or the, the assessment will continue on this property, whether they farm it or not, it just, it's continuous. That, those dollars will go to the San Carlos Irrigation District, if I understand that correctly.
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, I think so.
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. It appears to be in pretty much of an industrial area.
That's true.
Do, do we know how many acres have been in production, and how often?
In terms of...
Like, you know, it, it's fallowed, it appears to be fallowed at this point. Do we know how many acres are fallowed out of the 888?
No, I think that could be a question to the applicant, because...
Does the applicant know?
I think it varies year to year.
Okay. I, I think that's all for now.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Chairman. The, this appears to be over, you know, touches the floodplain and around the area of the Gila River, and so I've driven this, and I'm surprised, because there's, there's Indian mounds through here? How do we deal with that?
So, as far as the river portion is concerned, we have tried to see that we've, we've conserved that area, along with additional 100 feet of floodplain distances, to then have the solar panels after, built after, so...
Okay. Have, have we consulted with the Indian communities on this? Because there are, like, if I'm thinking it's the right place, there, there are mounds with, with fence around them in this area.
I think there is. I've been to the site, but I have not been all around, because there's no access on the left side of the, on the, on the western portion, so, the applicant, when they have to move forward, further analysis in terms of, you know, impact assessments, environmental studies are part of the zoning requirements. This is a decision only to ensure land use, so we have done our studies as per, based on the land use and the current usage for that.
Any other questions from the board? All right, on this, in, in that case, I would ask for motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone the, still date certain, so we can communicate with the Indian communities about these areas.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Can we just...
Forgive me.
I'm sorry.
A date.
Oh, how about a date certain?
A date.
Yes, I heard that. Okay, let's have a date.
We need a date.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
We have a, we have a motion in progress, so it wouldn't be an appropriate time to speak.
Yes, so...
Let's go with a month from now.
Okay, so we're looking at December the 7th?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I, my motion would be to postpone to December 7th.
I have a motion and a second.
Are we good? You're looking at me.
Mr. Chairman, do, do, I have no problem with the motion, I would just like to make sure we check with planning and development, make sure that there isn't time constraints on this, because I know a lot of our major comp plan amendments must be done, I believe, before the end of the year, and will that comply with that? Is that sufficient enough time? Do we have to do any other additional posting? Is what I was wondering...
Well, my, my primary concern is making sure that the Indian communities have enough time to get in here. Not all of the moun- Not all of the mounds are surrounded by fence. But local people who took me in the area pointed out ball fields and all sorts of things. Presumably, people lived here. Presumably, there would be burial areas as well. So that's my primary concern.
Understood.
Can I?
Yes, please.
So as part of this process of outreach and agency mailouts, we have?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, we have a, we have a?
Motion and a second, so we're trying to find, but we are trying to find out if that's the correct time, if there's a time available.
If it pleases the Chair.
Please.
So, Chris, Mr. Keller is correct. This is a comprehensive plan amendment. There are very strict standards by which, when you apply, and the matter of course, to be able to complete that, it has to be completed by the end of the year. The December timeframe may be able to work. I just asked Gilbert if he, because it has to be advertised and the publishing has to occur. The big challenge that may occur beyond that, if we can meet that deadline, is if we make changes to this comprehensive plan amendment based on information that's found, it has to be reverted back to Planning and Zoning Commission before it can come back to the board if changes were made. So that's, if that was the case, then we certainly can't meet the timeline, but we're going to try to meet the timeline. The other thing that Sangita might have mentioned earlier is, there was a lot of notice done, including to the Indian communities as part of this project and as part of this application. I don't know if we received any responses or any, I don't know where Sangita went. Oh. Did we get any responses from any of the Indian communities when we did the correspondence?
No. And that's part of, it's not just done once. We do it twice before the PNZ, even before the 60-day mailout is done. We reach out to 60 agencies across Gila River. We receive no responses from them.
Very well. So we have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Now I need a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails.
There's no need to do the other two.
Yeah.
Now they're different. So now?
No reason to do it.
There are two, they're different comprehensive plan amendments.
Okay.
As I understand them, number 12 has to do with the military compatibility component. And that still needs a presentation, I believe staff has a presentation prepared for that one.
Right.
Similarly for number 13.
Number 13. It was a mistake to put them all together in the front end. I was told separately, told later that I couldn't do that, so. Item number 12 is now a discussion, approval, disapproval of resolution number 2022-PZ-PA-008-22, resolution approving case PZ-PA-008-22. A major comp plan amendment requested by Pinal County, requesting a major comprehensive plan amendment to the whole comprehensive plan again. There we go, okay, military, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Larry Harmer. I'm a new addition to county staff, part-time senior planner. I attempted my third try at retiring back in August and was contacted by Mr. Billingsley about coming over here to help wrap up a few of these projects that have been being worked on. This is one of them. As you're aware, or most of you are aware, the JLUSS project itself, the joint land use study, was initiated back in about 2018. A full-blown study funded by the Department of Defense was begun in 2019, and the Board of Supervisors adopted it in April of 2020. Following that, there was the opportunity to apply for another Department of Defense grant to go to the next stages of the JLUSS implementation. This has occurred in many communities throughout the United States and abroad. And we will be introducing the consultant to go into the full-blown presentation here shortly. Just as a quick background additionally, we do have representatives of the Arizona Army National Guard here. I actually had four colonels here earlier, but three of them had to go to Camp Navajo, so they're going to go up and chase the snow around for a while. This is to create a new Chapter 10 within the comprehensive plan. We currently have a Chapter 10, which is the implementation chapter. That will be redesignated as Chapter 11, should this be approved by the board. It's necessary to bring forth this amendment to get this portion done in order to then move forward to the next sequential step, which is the creation of zoning, or a zoning amendment to your development and zoning code to establish specific criteria within the impact area of these National Guard facilities. With that, I'd like to introduce Brandon Cox from Matrix Group, Matrix Design Group. They were the original consultants on the JLUSS, and they are continuing on this project at this time. He'll give you a brief summary presentation of the entire Chapter 10 that's being proposed. You do have the entire document in your packet.
All right.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for having me today. Is it set up for?
That remote's done. You have to go up to the TV and turn the knob now. Or get the supervisor to do it.
Oh, sorry. All right, so thank you, Larry, for the introduction. So the military element will provide information for the comprehensive plan for the county for future planning in regards to lands around the military installations, the four Arizona Army National Guard installations. And those sites are Rittenhouse Training Site, Florence Military Reservation, Pocacho Peak, Stage Field, and Silver Bell Army Helport. Each of those have a little bit different missions, and I'll go through those on the following slides, or talk a little bit about what each of the different, what are called military compatibility areas around each of those sites. So this map just shows the general location of those sites throughout the county. The first site, Rittenhouse Training Site, is up near Queen Creek, and the town limit's actually about the northern boundary of the site. Rittenhouse Training Site is used primarily for aviation operations. The Guard conducts Bambi Bucket training and sling load. They'll pick up a heavy load and transport it around to practice moving equipment around in the field. And then the Bambi Bucket is for part of their state firefighting mission, where they'll go and collect water from the canal and put it over some, not actual fires, but like a virtual fire to do that training. So as you'll see on this slide, there are two different military compatibility areas. The first one is kind of that oblong yellow boundary, and that is made up of half a mile buffer around those two different flight corridors that the Guard uses. They'll exit the site and then come back. So that is over some Arizona State Trust land, some already developed land, and most of it to the east is already, it's undeveloped right now. The second MCA is the land use MCA, and that is a half-mile buffer around the installation. And the purpose of these MCAs, there will be, there's policies in the chapter that relate to each of these MCAs to help guide the county and other stakeholders to plan and look at compatible land use within those areas around the installations. So for example, that half-mile land use is looking at minimizing density around, within that area to keep, so there's not heavy residential or other types of uses around that may be affected by the helicopter overflight or the other types of activities that are occurring there. And then for that helicopter overflight MCA, it's looking at minimizing vertical structures within that that could impact the helicopter operational safety.
So just to ask a question here, I mean, you're talking about having an operational zone half a mile around it, but it's over a bunch of homes there already.
So at this stage, it's only looking at policies within that area to help guide future growth. There will be a component that will be a follow-up to this, that will be, there may be some zoning components associated with that. So that will be a separate process. For now, the policies are looking at how to engage the county with the Guard to formalize some opportunities to work with the Guards if there's a proposal that comes in to alert the Guards so they can provide comments on if, what type of impact that may have on their operations within that area.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Either one of those circles, is any of that state land?
Some of the land underneath is, yes, state land.
The BLM?
I believe there is some BLM, there's some Bureau of Reclamation along the canal as well.
Is there any, I mean, and then there is some private, correct? Yeah. I'm just, after today's meetings, I think that, that's a concern, that we need to notify state land, BLM, I mean, state land particularly, because they may put it for an auction. And they, if we have this overlay on it, they should know that, or they should be able to disclose that before somebody wants to purchase it. I'm always encouraging state land to sell land, that's a whole nother subject. But as you look at something like this, it can have a cause and effect on future development, one way or the other, good, bad, or otherwise. So I think that this type of a map should actually kind of show us who's the landowners or who has the responsibility of those lands going forward. It's just an observation.
Thank you, Supervisor. So there is a compatible use implementation committee that has been involved in this whole process, and State Land Department is one of the members. And they have reviewed these maps. We've made some adjustments, and they, I'm not speaking for them, but during our meetings, they were comfortable with the maps.
Okay.
They are very heavily involved in this process as well.
Supervisor Goodman.
Thank you. My understanding is, the training and everything that's been there going on for some years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so a lot of these, like these mini farms right here to the left, to the west of the property, has been established there for years, a lot of that area. I don't know how long Castle Gate and all that's been in there, probably 20 years, something along those nature. And maybe this isn't, but isn't that full disclosure given to the, when they purchase a home and stuff, don't they know all that?
Typically.
Is that given?
If it's a subdivision, it's the public report.
Okay.
If it's a subdivision.
Okay, so part of this map already, what you're doing right now is just expanding it, correct?
Expanding what?
The pattern, I mean.
For where the helicopters operate?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I'm hoping I can provide a little bit of assistance. So this is a comprehensive plan amendment. So all this is establishing a chapter, essentially putting together a toolkit to where if development occurs inside of this boundary, there is a planning process set forth to review and approve that project. The Rittenhouse Training Site was built before World War II and was built as part of a network of touchdown airports for Williams Field as part of flight training, landing, those types of things. And the military's been utilizing it for a very long time in that area. Hopefully, that helps answer that question.
And, thank you. And that does, in fact, to Supervisor Miller's point, to the very fact of what's happened here earlier today, this will help in the process to where those, any development that goes on, what we're doing right now, will actually send the message loud and clear, and all the planning will be done accordingly around it. So thank you.
And state land is here today in the audiences, as well as the National Guard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the second site around Florence Military Reservation, there's three different military compatibility areas. There is the same half-mile land use MCA. There is an impact noise MCA, which is the green boundary. And that boundary is based off of an annual average of the noise generated by the weapons ranges out there at Florence Military Reservation. The last MCA is the airspace protection MCA. And there's restricted airspace over Florence Military Reservation. It's currently used to keep aircraft out of that area when the ranges are active, or if the military is doing certain activities in there to protect non-participating aircraft. So that airspace protection MCA would, the boundary is an additional mile around that restricted airspace, and it would be to support compatible development within that, such as minimizing tall structures over 200 feet that may affect flight activity in that area that's used by the National Guard. For Pocacho Peak Stage Field, there's two, I'm sorry, there's four MCAs, so you have the land use MCA, the half-mile buffer. There's an airfield safety MCA, which is based on the airfield safety zones that come off the ends of the runways down there. There's four current runways that are used for helicopter training activity. And then this map shows some proposed, if there was an expansion of the airfield down there, that's what this map is showing as well. The orange and yellow areas that go off to the west side there. So those would be to minimize density within those areas if there were an aircraft mishap, so that's not dense there, and minimize concerns for health and safety. The airfield obstructions MCA is based on the slope of the aircraft departing from the runways, and it's to minimize structures up to 200 feet within those areas. And you'll see, they don't go very far off of the, outside the airfield. And then the airspace protection MCA is a four nautical mile radius around the air traffic control tower that's out at Pocacho Peak Stage Field. So that represents the air traffic control airspace that's used by the Guard to conduct their missions down there. And that will be to provide awareness, you know, keeping, like drone activity out of that, keeping the public aware of an area that that might not be an appropriate use for drone activity. And then also looking at the vertical obstruction component down there as well. The last site, Silver Bell Army Helport, has the land use MCA, that half-mile buffer. It also has a separate airfield safety MCA and the AV, sorry, the airfield obstructions MCA. Much of those go over Pinal Air Park, so they're already kind of protected by the activities that occur at the airpark. And the majority of the land around here, as well, is Arizona State Trust land. And then the main component of the chapter will be the policies, goals, and objectives that will support looking at future growth around those four Army National Guard sites. will support, looking at future growth around those four Army, Army National Guard sites, to help the, as I mentioned, the county coordinate with the guard, and also work with other stakeholders as some of those cities and towns around the installations may grow, and expand their boundaries into those MCAs as well.
Are there any questions from the board? Or comments? Seeing, hearing none, this is, this does have a public hearing aspect to it. I have one request from Mr. Smith. So, Mr. Smith, if you'd care to come up, and I'll open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you Supervisors. I'm Tony Smith, President of Pinal Partnership. And Pinal Partnership, I know you all know, but the public might not know, is a main advocate for economic growth within Pinal County and our communities. But today, I stand before you in support of item number 12, which is the Military Compatibility Chapter 10. Pinal County residents and the Arizona Army National Guard have a long history of coexistence. Pinal County is fortunate, as mentioned, to have four of those facilities, two primary training sites, the Florence Military Reservation, and the Silver Bell Army Helport, which is one of only four Army National Guard aviation training sites in the country, as well as two support locations, Picacho Peak, Stagefield, and the Rittenhouse Training Site. Approximately 5,300 soldiers train and prepare to respond to state and national security emergencies at these facilities. This is basically, kind of like LUCID at full buildout, as far as the manpower that we have supporting here in Pinal County. In addition to being a critical state and national defense asset, these training sites contribute significantly to the local and regional economy for nearly 500 million in economic impact annually. The purpose of this new chapter addresses military and community compatibility, planning and long-term sustainability in military operations in Pinal County. Forward-looking planning is necessary for appropriate land use around our military installations. The Military Compatibility Chapter prioritizes Pinal County residents' health, safety, and welfare while supporting military training today and into the future, and I encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, are there any others that care to speak to this item? From the public? Going once, going twice? Sold. I will close the public hearing at this time, and I would ask for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 12 as presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Kennedy, is it, Ms. Kennedy, does this require a roll call vote? I see here that it does.
Because of the supermajority, I would recommend it.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Goodman?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Searcy?
Aye.
And Chairman McClure?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimous.
Thank you very much. Is everyone doing okay up here? Okay. What? Keep rolling.
I'm just killing time till the Powerball drawing tonight.
Okay, okay. Item 13 is a public hearing and discussion approval, disapproval on resolution number Resolution approving case PZ-PA-009-22, major comp plan amendment for creation of a special district land use for Arizona State Trust lands, and you are back, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And I had a whole follow-up presentation to all that, I was hoping for a question, but short-circuited that. I'm bringing forward another major comprehensive plan amendment. This one, I have not been too involved with, and I only say that because I was actually part of the COIP team from the original JLU, so, I had a certain familiar error with it. This one's a little newer for me. This was initiated by the county and working closely with the Arizona State Trust in order to look at long-term viability of planning and developing their lands. As you are likely aware, the Arizona State Trust lands provide funding source for 13 different trust beneficiaries. Most people are familiar with public schools, but there is actually a whole list of different agencies, and when the state of Arizona was created, different plots of trust land were assigned to those different beneficiaries. So, the sale of those are actually already pre-assigned as to where, who will get the monies from them. I won't go into the list, but the auction and sale of trust lands is regulated by the Arizona Constitution and the Arizona revised statutes. Also, required in there is the requirement that counties, cities, and towns cooperate with state trust as far as the pre-planning and development of their lands. Because we're tied to this, we being the counties of Arizona, tied to a calendar year limitation on the processing of comprehensive plan amendments, this amendment is being put forward, and we do have a consultant here to present those to you. As you may be aware, cities and towns, this last legislative session got exemption from the calendar processing of comp plan amendments. They now have to do them with a 12-month period of application, but it doesn't have to fall within a single calendar year. So, hopefully, you will all push with that for your lobbyists for next legislative session. It's, would be of great benefit to you. Also, just for a little bit of background, the communities of Morana and Queen Creek have a similar statements within their general plans that is being proposed as far as this comp plan amendment. And with that, I'll introduce Representative Michael Baker International, who's under contract to handle this case. Matthew Kleizik is here to give the next level of presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you Chair and fellow supervisors. I did not buy a lottery ticket, so, I'm going to keep my comments succinct, so that I can hopefully go get that in tonight. But seriously, I appreciate Larry's introduction, I think he did a great job of explaining the ask. What I would like to start off with and get into is to talk a little bit about the history or the why about this request. And so, Larry pointed out, and I hope this graphic details, first and foremost, the amount of trust land that exists in Pinal County. So, the map you see here, all of the blue or purple, depending on your, your color viewpoint, identifies the amount of trust land that is located within Pinal County today. So, you can see the, the composition of that, and where it's located, and, and how it's comprised of, and I think it's easy to see that it's important to evaluate how we plan for growth within these lands. And so, that's really what this request is predicated on. But beyond that, some of the other considerations that we have to keep in mind is the comment that Larry made about state statute only allowing major comprehensive plan amendments to be presented at a single public hearing during the calendar year. This can make it very challenging of, to prepare for, this can be very challenging to prepare trust land for auction, because, if you look at the second bullet point, the lease and/or disposition of trust land is governed by strict statutory regulations. So, there is the challenge from a timing standpoint, where trust land is not like private land, in that it's not as flexible, as nimble, as maybe a private development, because they have these statutory requirements that they must adhere to. And the other aspect that we must keep in mind is, much of state trust land within the county often has a, a holding zoning category with it, which is usually low-density residential, maybe one dwelling unit to an acre or less. And because of that, at any time that state trust land is auctioned, it most often does require a comprehensive plan amendment, in many cases, a major comprehensive plan amendment. And so, with the fact that they are a requirement, but the single time per year limitation creates a, a timing issue with trust lands, and how the State Land Department looks at disposing of land within that timeframe. So, this request is looking to try to address some of those aspects. We're also looking at the fact that the revised statutes requires the county to coordinate with the State Land Department to ensure that harmonious development of those lands. So, this is another action that the county is going through to follow state statute, in being responsive to coordinating with the trust land and identifying ways that we can plan for growth on these lands appropriately. So, with response to all of those, we're presenting to the, this afternoon, I should say, this special district, land use classification, as well as a minor comprehensive plan amendment regulations. Now, with that, Chair, I certainly can go into detail in the, the specific text amendments, but again, to just be succinct, I'll broadly go over the, the locations of those tech changes, and if we want to get or have questions specifically on them, I'm happy to get into it in more detail. But this slide just gives an overview of within the comprehensive plan, where specific text amendments are being proposed in association with this special district request. So, up in Chapter 3, on page 48, within the comprehensive plan, we just simply introduce some introductory language to capture the state trust land within the county, and to identify that the county and the comprehensive plan utilizes multiple districts to manage those lands, and if found to be acceptable, the special district would be one of those. In the second bullet point, under additional land use designations, page 92 to 93, this is where the bulk of the text is introduced, in terms of creating the special district, and identifying some elements that manage how that district would be applied, and I'm going to touch on the, those on the next slide. And then, the last one talks about identifying the introduction of any request to this district would constitute a minor amendment, as opposed to a major amendment. So, a couple points that I'll share in closing, and then turn it over to you, Chair, for questions, is key considerations and takeaways. This amendment only creates the district. We are not proposing any changes to the comprehensive land use plan. So, I think that's very important to understand, is that while we recognize we want to work with the trust to allow for flexibility, we also need to make sure that we have our bumpers on that flexibility, to make sure that we understand that we're upholding the, the interest of residents. And, and so, we felt that the first step needs to be creating this district. The next step is bringing land forward and proposing those lands to this special district, and having them stand on their own merit. So, if found to be acceptable, this special district would be created, but at future points in time, the State Land Department would have to come forward and propose land that they manage to be placed into this special district, which would then go through the public hearing process. Now, that public hearing process is another aspect that we wanted to look at. We understand that this special district was creating some flexibility in the types of uses that would be allowed in it, whether that, that would allow residential, employment, commercial, and green energy uses, as well as open space in this district. But, we also identified that the district could only utilize certain zoning districts after they get the comprehensive plan designation. So, the special district's created, the trust department may come through and identify a land for the special district. If it's found to, if it's found that that land is appropriate for the special district, when they come through for the re-zone, they must adhere to one of these three zoning districts. Multi-purpose community master plan, large master plan community, or planned area development. Why is that? Those are the three zoning districts that, that county has that requires master plan documents, and all the studies to go along with it. So, that's our key, to make sure we're still holding these projects to the review and the public review that they require, but doing it at the proper point in the process, to align with the mandates that the trust land department has. And so, I'll close with, over the process, during the public review process, we did receive that one formal letter of support from the State Land Department. We did not hear any other comments from the public, but we did go through the CAC, like all the other comprehensive plan amendments, and it was approved favorably by the CAC, and approved favorably by the Planning Commission. And with that, Chair, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Miller, let's see.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I don't really have a question. I, I will tell you, I spoke to staff one day. I see special district, all I think is taxes. And I wish we would have used a different terminology, like overlay, or something to that effect. But outside of that, I mean, I'm totally in support of this, however, I just would have used a different term. That's, that's me personally.
Yes, in hindsight, that comment was expressed to me as well, and understood, yes.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing, hearing none, this does have a public hearing aspect, and I will open up the public hearing at this time. I have three requests on this item, and number one would be Mr. Wall. Like the tie, by the way, green.
Oh, thank you, sir. Honorable Chair, honorable board members and staff, good afternoon, almost good evening. But I'm here as the President of the Adobe Organization in Gold Canyon, representing them, and also the committee under Adobe, the Gold Canyon Alliance, which opposes this particular thing on one item. It is my understanding that if it is passed, Pinal County will be the only county that would have this in the state of Arizona at this juncture, as I think was as indicated previously by previous speaker. We understand the conundrum that you are involved in, that you may want to fast-track something, you don't want to lose somebody, maybe a buyer wants to buy land, and you're waiting and waiting through the processes, and next thing you know, they leave town and go somewhere else, and we understand that. But I think with that, there is a cost, and that cost is the citizens of Pinal County having sufficient time to organize and give their input on these potential purchases and developments. In September, when the P&amp;Z Commission met, discussed, and voted on this resolution, there were three noes to this, including the chairperson. Within the minutes of that meeting, one commissioner stated, and I quote, "It was mentioned that in Gold Canyon last year," that was the Rivian situation, "it happened, and special district amendment could have been used to accelerate the process to get it into a position where public outcry would no longer be reached." That was a problem, unquote. That's why it was changed to the one-year, quote, "Gives time for the public to respond. I think this is a bad idea," quote. Adobe and the Alliance believes also this is a bad idea. Interesting that on 008, it passed 7-1, on 011, the ones we just talked about, passed 0, 0 to 11, and on this one, it was 5-3. Now, I heard comments today that we'd listened to P&amp;Z, one more vote and it'd been a stalemate on this issue. I say there's issues and problems with this as presented. I respectfully but strongly recommend that the item be tabled, postponed, to have more time to evaluate. Listening to the presentation today was well-presented, but it was a little bit convoluted to understand every nuance of what was really presented here today, and I think it takes more time. It may be expedient for the purposes of government to pass the resolution, but it lessens the process of the input of the people, the people that the government serves. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mary Ann Fries. All right, Mary Ann Fries.
How are you all? I took time to read over the planning and zoning minutes of nine fifteen twenty-two twice, and I've got to say, I didn't completely understand the special district as they compared it to a minor amendment. I wonder if a minor amendment would still allow for the public hearing and the time involved, or how much time are you taking away by creating the special district compared to a minor amendment? So I find I still have to look up or learn more about what your minor amendment actually is. Is it just a stroke of a pen, or is there actually something that we have to go through a process that may take less than a year, or does it just take four to six weeks? You know, according to some of the applications I looked at on the packets. As Mr. Walp had said, I was very upset that there was no respect shown by one of the members who was happy about stopping the public outcry. I also listened to many residents in our area who feel that you may have already made up your mind, and I hope you haven't, and that this is just a formality, so they didn't want to come. And I don't want to see that happen here. I think it's too important. Each of you are serving the public, and I know you're all very intelligent in knowing what you're doing, and we can trust you, but I do have concerns that this should be tabled further until we can look it over a little bit more and evaluate what's going on here with a so-called special district. I understand the state would probably have their regulations that they have to go through, so why are we changing ours? And if we're changing ours, does it have to be such a large, such a huge amount to be coincided with a minor amendment? I also wondered the legality of this. Does this have to go through a legislature? You know, I have questions. I just think we're rushing into something here without completely understanding what's going on, and I don't want to see everything just rushed through, and this development going on, that development going on quickly, without really evaluating what we want in Pinell County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Cameron Carter.
Chairman Supervisors, Cameron Carter Rose Law Group. We represent many private landowners and developers that are working with the state land department, looking at state land property. We work with site selectors and the ACA on numerous projects, including some of the largest projects that are happening in Pinell County right now, major employers. We're supportive of this proposed major comprehensive plan amendment to adopt the special district, to allow that to be a non-major amendment. I'll let staff, staff can walk you through the process, but what we're talking about here, as I understand it, is any change to the special district would require a non-major amendment, that would go through the full public hearing process, not with the one-year requirement, but in some cases, that that non-major comprehensive plan amendment could even take longer than a year, depending on, you know, the issues on the particular property. What this does is it allows for potential users of state land to start that process. So as they're working with site selectors, and they're looking at sites in Arizona and a site in Texas, they know that they can immediately jump in and start to process entitlements on state land, and that's extremely helpful. This particular major comprehensive plan amendment, we've been tracking, you know, with state land and with the county and the process that it's gone through, it has gone to the planning commission, it's gone to the Citizens Advisory Committee, it's been well-vetted, and we appreciate your consideration of this and hope that it gets passed today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there any others from the public that wish to speak to this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing aspect of this item. Are there questions or comments from the board?
If.
I?
Yeah.
Oh, you?
Yes.
Supervisor Goodman.
I. I just, you know, the one thing is, is that I'm part of what this process, and I appreciate your presentation, because you had a big part to do with us in the Plan Santan, and so we appreciate Michael Baker and you being here and presenting. But with that, one of our biggest problems in the Santan Valley area is the large amount of, of public land, I mean, state land, and not very much private land that would, for development of commercial and things of that nature, retail. This will help address some of the issues there, correct?
Maybe.
Brett?
Maybe.
Oh, don't jump, just, you know, both coming.
I didn't want to speak for staff, but having assisted on this through the life of the effort, you're correct, Supervisor Goodman, that that was one of the things that was top of mind when looking at this, is the amount of private land in Pinell County in certain locations. Obviously, Pinell County's large, and so in some areas, this might not be the best tool, but in other areas, it could be a very helpful tool. And so that was why we looked at this, first, creating the tool, and then looking at land use second, and on its own merit, so that there can be a public process, and that it can be transparent, and that it can come to the right, hopefully, conclusion. So that was, I think, one point I wanted to make, and you sparked a thought in my mind that I thought was very interesting to hear. At the CAC, one of the residents that spoke, I believe they lived, they were on the CAC, they live in the Red Rock area, and they expressed in the Red Rock area that there's trust land around that, and that they had had some particular issues that they wanted to look at in their community, and liked the idea of being able to utilize this tool to possibly work with trust land to accomplish that. When we went to the planning commission, one of the planning commissioners shared a similar comment in the Santan area about wanting to get some of this trust land in private hands to encourage that type of development that residents want to see, whether that's commercial or employment. So I think, Ms. Supervisor Goodman, that you're spot-on, that that's where, again, this is a county-initiated request. We don't have any desire to, to create a tool that the public, or that isn't helpful to the public in terms of positioning Pinell County in a way that can be competitive across the state. And so that's what this tool, again, is about, and then we hope that future processes will then help facilitate that tool. I would then clarify the minor amendment process, just for the comment. It certainly has a public hearing process to it. The two key factors are differences between a major and minor amendment. Major amendments have a sixty-day review process and require a supermajority approval. Minor amendment still has the public hearing process, but just needs a majority. So the key, though, is, is the timing aspect, and so that's the condition why the minor amendment process looked appropriate, because it still required the public hearing process, and then the zoning process after it even requires more notification. So there will be two points in the process that the public would still have opportunity to comment on. So with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Sertie.
Yeah, I wanted to agree with Mr. Goodman and address the Adobe folks, that this is a big county, and I understand your concerns with the state land along sixty, but the rest of the county does, does need this option.
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a minimum acreage that's required on this? And, because it looks like it must be with these large type of community master plans and what have you. What, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't see that or hear that.
Yeah, Supervisor Miller, great question, and the short answer is no. There is no acreage maximum or minimum, and that was a point of conversation as well. And as we looked at the county overall, we had instances where comments were made that sometimes it's a small piece, but it's a critical piece for a particular area, and, and the tool, they wanted the ability to utilize that tool to facilitate that small five-acre piece, or two-hundred-acre piece, or, you know, larger. And so at that point, it was, well, then it becomes an arbitrary number. Are we just picking five acres, you know, as a minimum and certain number as a maximum? And how do we land on something that is predicated on logic? And so from this vantage point, we thought no acreage limitation, and that's also rooted in why we started to look at specifying those follow-up zoning districts that do have certain acreage limitations on them when you utilize them.
Yeah, it's too bad this wasn't in place on that piece of land on Hunt Highway.
So, yes.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or questions? Hearing none, I would now ask for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number thirteen as presented.
Natasha's asking you something.
You have a comment? We did, and I went back to questions. I know we're all, but yeah, I did. I was paying attention.
We're all asleep.
Yeah, I got it. I'm doing autopilot on this one. Okay, so I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number thirteen as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
This requires a roll call vote, and you're on.
Supervisor Caffenow.
Nay.
Supervisor Goodman.
Yes.
Supervisor Miller.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie.
Aye.
And Chairman McClure.
Aye.
That motion passes four to one.
Thank you. Item fourteen has been withdrawn. Item fifteen is a public hearing discussion, approval, disapproval on resolution number one-one-zero-two-two-two-rid-two-two-zero-three-seven, ordering an abandonment and extinguishment of easement comprising a portion of Manzanita Road. And I believe, Ms. Garza, you've been waiting around, but you're up.
I'm here. How are you? Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board.
Afternoon.
I'm here to present both items fifteen and sixteen, which are extinguishments of thirty-three feet of easement located on Manzanita Road or Manzanita Street. This first item, on the title slide, is actually written incorrectly, the limits. It should read Prospector Road West, three-hundred-and-thirty feet, but since I was working on two presentations on the same board meeting along the same alignment, we lost that in translation. But these are both located in northern Apache Junction. Oh, there we go. So this one is just west of Prospector Road. Both of the lots for items fifteen and sixteen are undeveloped land in which the homeowners want to increase the setbacks of the lot due to the terrain. All the utilities have been notified, and all the property owners surrounding both of these have been in agreement with the abandonment and are for it. I couldn't get to the alignment. Manzanita mostly is undeveloped with no county maintenance on it, so it's way back here in the distance. This is a location from Roundup looking north, and this is just further to the east looking north as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? None. This has a public hearing aspect, and I'll now open. Natasha, where are you? I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone from the public care to speak to this item? Hearing, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on item fourteen, on item fifteen, rather, and I, again, ask the board if they have any questions. Hearing, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number fifteen as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Item sixteen, Ms. Garza, you're back up again.
Item sixteen is vaguely this much similar case along Manzanita Road.
Vaguely much similar?
Vaguely.
Is that like?
It's been a long day for all of us.
Is that explicitly vague? Is that what you're going to tell me? Okay.
It is located.
It's similar or it's vague. It's one of the two.
On cover-all bases. So the location is between Moon to Marlowe. It's also three-hundred-and-thirty feet long. Increasing the building envelope again, property owners are in full agreement again, and utilities have been notified. So again, the, this location of Manzanita was not, I can't, couldn't access the alignment, so this is looking south from Shiprock Street, and this is looking north from Shiprock Street, and north from Roundup, Roundup Street. Any questions?
Any questions from the board from Ms. Garza? Hearing none, this has a public hearing aspect, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone from the public care to speak to this item? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and if there are no questions from the board, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number sixteen as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Item seventeen. Oh, Mr. Ortiz, I see you rolling up here. This would be.
Walk faster, Joe.
Yeah, come on, baby. Resolution number one-one-zero-two-two-two-rid-two-two-zero-three-six, accepting grant of easement for roadway and utility purposes from Stephen A. Saavedra. You're on, Mr. Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Pinell County Public Works Deputy Director. This is a request by Public Works staff to accept a perpetual easement for roadway and utility purposes. This is a deed of easement granted from Stephen A. Saavedra. This easement is associated with a planning development site plan, SPRPA one-two-two-twenty-one. This easement will be used as a frontage entrance for S&amp;J Construction Yard. Quick little background, this is located off of Hannah Road, just east of Chuchu, and it, it borders Casa Grande city limits, which is along Hannah Road. So we have been coordinated with the city of, city of Casa Grande on this, so. The purpose of this is actually to gather right away for future needs for expansion of Hannah Road potentially someday.
And this is a, just, so there's a grant, we're not purchasing this, he's just saying, here, here's some ground?
No, exactly. It was donated through the site plan review part.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board for Mr. Ortiz? Mr. Supervisor Miller.
Chuchu Road, huh? Not really a question, it's a comment. This is, this is forward-thinking, because we may widen this road someday, and now we'll have access to the property to, to construct.
Exactly.
You know, for more traffic out by Chuchu.
Yep.
Yeah, if we don't have it today.
Chuchu is Attaway.
Someday. Down Attaway. Attaway.
Okay, so, all right, so any other questions or comments from the board? We're getting punchy now, okay?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, all right. Hearing, seeing no questions from the board, I would ask for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number seventeen as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Item eighteen, discussion approval, disapproval of an IGA between Pinell County and the city of Nogales for the purpose of transferring ownership of a 2011 Chevy Silverado 1500 with a VIN number of a whole bunch of things, from the county to Nogales for the sum of one dollar. I, this item requires unanimous consent of the board. Presenter is Mark Lamb, you're on the phone, I'm guessing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I apologize for not being there in person. I have an event to attend, so I had to cut out. But this is, this item is going to be a K-nine vehicle that we've had, it's an older K-nine vehicle that the city of Nogales has requested they're in need of, and so we are going to give them this vehicle. and so we are going to give them this vehicle, of course, for a dollar, and just need approval of the board if you're not in objection.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from the board or comments? Hearing, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve item number 18 as presented.
This does, I, do I have a second?
Second.
This does require unanimous consent. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Supervisors.
Yep, have a good evening. Item 19, discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items and/or reports to be presented at upcoming meetings. Does the board have anything that they would care to see on a future agenda? Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that after today's proceedings, I would suggest that we have a, at least a work session on really what the policies and future development for Pinal County. I think our new slogan might be no vacancy, because it didn't appear that, it's like, we're all here now and don't let anybody else in. It was, it's challenging to try and encourage development with, when there seems to be a lot of negativity towards any kind of development. So I don't know, I think we ought to really look at that and consider what, what we're going to do. Is there not going to be any more solar panels in Pinal County? Are we, are we done with that? Beers will be. You know, when we designate residential and they go through all the in-process, they give everything, and then they choose, we're, they're sent packing without their project, it's a little disconcerting today, so I think it's a discussion that has to take place with this board going forward. May not be an agenda item, but it might be a work session item.
Very well. Any other items that anyone cares to have on the agenda? Hearing, seeing none, all right, let's move on to item 20, which is an executive session. I need a motion to convene to executive session.
Excuse me, Mr.?
And, oh, we can't do any advocacy, he's not.
No, Mr. Chairman, you know, item number 22, we do not have counsel available any longer for that one, so if you are going into executive session, it would just be for items number 20 and 21, and it would be up to the board's discretion whether you want to continue 22 to a future date.
Let's, let's, okay. Does the board have any feeling on that? I would move, well, I can't.
I'll make a motion to continue item number 22 to the next meeting, which is?
The next board meeting is November the 16th.
To November 16th.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. The 20, item 22 is moved to the whatever day that was.
November 16th. 11/16.
Thank you, that one. In this case, I need a motion to convene to executive session for 20 and 21. Oh, that's true, you know what? We're already in it. We've just recessed.
We recessed it, remember?
That's true, okay. So quit playing volleyball in Foursquare, we're in executive session.
I ordered a hot sandwich. Mine was cold. My salad is wilted. Yeah, they would start, well, we'd do a executive.